Good afternoon. I'd like to call the January 26, 2016 city council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on my nation under God, individual liberty and the Constitution of this world.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Question.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Okay, is there any changes to the agenda?
No.
No. And actually, I told Ms. Bjork she'd be last, but I guess maybe she could be first unless she's out of the -- so, public comment, we have -- yeah. I asked during public comment, actually, there's been a lot of questions about the water main breaks, and I know I told you I'd put you last, but I thought I'd put you first. Sorry about that, Ms. Bjork. But so, we thought we'd use this moment just during public comment just for information about what's happening with Highway 101 and the water main break since we got so much information about that. And thank you for being here, Ms. Bjork.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, and I just wanted to give you a brief update on the water main breaks that happened last Thursday that impacted so many of our commutes. At about 3:00 in the morning, we had a break on Castillo Street at where you see Water Main Break Number One. It's a 12-inch pipeline, and we had about a two-foot-long -- actually, I think it was about a six-foot-long split along that pipe, so a very significant break. That created a surge in our distribution system pipes, which resulted in a second break on an old section of pipe that runs under the freeway. Most of our pipes that run under the freeway are sleeved. This pipe was only half-sleeved for some reason, and it resulted in damage under the freeway to the number-one lane and the number-three lane, as well as flooding. Caltrans was extremely responsive. They met us out there very quickly. We hired an engineering firm that specializes in roadways to come and assist them in their decision-making, and they were very prompt in responding and repairing the number-three lane, and then subsequently repairing the number-one lane where there was a large void, kind of a scarily large void, under the median, the center median of the freeway. At this point in time, we have not a lot of information about the cost of repairs, and Caltrans does want to do some additional work to get rid of the remaining bump in the fast lane, and we are evaluating whether we need to replace the line under the freeway. We have determined that we don't need it in the short run. In the short run, we have sufficient redundancy to serve the system well through other lines that cross the freeway, but we're looking to see whether it's a line that we can permanently abandon or whether we need to plan to replace it at some future date. But at this point in time, that's about all I have on that. We have, as you know, put our main program, our main replacement program, on hold because of the drought. That's in part due to workload, but also in part to make sure we had money allocated for that in reserves should we really need that. Given the recent uptick in breaks, we are reevaluating that, and we'll be reporting back to council as to whether we think it's still prudent to continue to defer that work. We have not deferred the design, so we have made substantial progress on being ready to move forward with replacements, and we will let you know where we stand with regard to actually moving forward with those replacements.
Okay, so, this is just for brief questions, because this is during public comment, but Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's to broaden it, because we've seen one of the sort of spate of breaks has been up in the sort of northeast corner of the city. In the event of a wildfire, and let's just say dozens of hydrants, and of course, everybody's private spigots going on, is that the kind of force, too, that could cause main breaks?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we --
Maybe this could be for another time, but that crossed my mind.
Yeah, we can address that more and more depth at a future time. I can tell you that our experience when we've had wildfires, we have not seen that kind of main break. It's more an increase in pressure in the system than a decrease, and we think this one caused by water flushing into the low-lying area.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I know we're not -- this isn't on the agenda for discussion. I'm not sure when you were thinking of coming back, but I was going to suggest that during our budget hearings, if it's appropriate, we can look at what kind of money that we're spending on water main replacement. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe you said this, and I missed it, but do we really have any idea why that break occurred?
Age of the pipe, we believe.
Yes, age.
Was 1914 or 1917. The trigger that caused it to happen was the change in pressure in the water system, a surge of water running from -- when the main broke, we have valves in the system that regulate pressures. They would open and let the water into the area where the main had broken because the water was leaving so quickly, and that can create the surge through the connecting pipes.
So, that's for both breaks? No, that's the second one.
The Castillo one was most likely just age-related.
Just age-related. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate that update. I know a lot of people were asking about it, and we'll look forward to future conversations and budget implications on this. Okay, so, we'll move on to the rest of public comment. We'll start with Pete Dalbello, to be followed by Michael Baker. We have two minutes here at the podium. Good afternoon.
Okay. Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Pete Dalbello. I'm a Santa Barbara native, and I've known the east side for all 44 years of my life. Well, I'll be running for city council in District Four in 2017. I come before you today with a concern in District One's east side. The application for a medical marijuana dispensary at 118 North Melpus Street was approved by Staff Hearing Officer Susan Reardon on January 20. It is unfortunate that crime at this location was among the things not thoroughly examined. The day after the hearing, I went to the police department, and they printed out these two pages of 911 calls from 2008 to 2015 for a total of 50 calls for just this address at 118 North Melpus Street. This includes an armed robbery in 2011 and a fire, most likely arson, in 2013. And this was before any talk of a dispensary at this location was ever mentioned. In addition to the lack of parking, truth is, the prior tenant had three parking spaces. This is among the many reasons that I will seriously consider, seriously consider filing an appeal against the approved application. Remember, three to five medical marijuana dispensaries in the neighborhood were closed only three years ago. Thank you for your time.
Michael Baker will be followed by Kenneth Locke.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs here in Santa Barbara County. I want to first thank each and every one of you for your continued support over the past year. We had major success this past year. We ended the year with 3,191 members, and that number's up significantly from previous years, but more important than anything else, we were able to, at some of our clubs, not only double our average daily attendance, but triple our average daily attendance at our club locations, getting kids in the buildings more often. And it brings me to you today to tell you about three different things that we're doing this year, the unique initiatives that we're doing here in Santa Barbara County. This card will get you into any boys and girls' club, really, in the country, but this is the membership card to the Boys and Girls Club. A typical purple membership card will be good for the whole year. What we're doing this year is children that attend 52 times a year, once they reach that 52nd day that they attend the Boys and Girls Club, they'll be given a silver card. We're encouraging kids to come more often, and what we're finding in the final card, the gold card, is what they'll get when they come on the 105th day, because the studies have shown that if you attend a Boys and Girls Club more than 105 times or more a year, you're twice as likely to graduate college. So, we are really pushing that, emphasizing that, and when the time comes at our west-side club here in Santa Barbara, when we do have the celebration, handing out those cards, I will invite each and every one of you to come down for that celebration. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kenneth Locke will be followed by Tom Widrow.
My name is Kenneth Locke. Just want to talk about my tennis, my new tennis teaching method, Tennesseons method. And you just had a tournament down at the municipal courts with, you know, probably ages between 12 and 18. And I'm going to be working on, actually, it's a system for development for tennis players. And the idea is that I want to bring, make you guys aware of is that, kind of at the age of 10 is when children start to get the motor memory skills, and this is like the time when you really, where they'll actually start to learn motor skills, 10, between 10 and 12. So, at that point, they should be learning how to actually develop both arms, it turns out. This is part of my new teaching method, which is kind of the next generation for tennis. And then, the idea is that when they get to about 17 or 18, they should start learning about the concepts of like mind-body integration and then holistic health. And then, also, I'm an artist, fine artist, and they should start learning about the connection between the fine arts, what it means to be a fine artist, as well as an athlete, and the whole idea of interdisciplinary. It turns out, I did a tweet this, today, using Djokovic as an example. I'm sorry to say that his education, it kind of ended at the age of 10 or 12. So, if you want to know what level of education he has in relation to his relationship with tennis, because he never entertained, he never had a teacher yet, this is the whole basis of now, I kind of represent the teacher he never had and kind of healer, make him healthy now, as well as the children and the tennis players of this community. So, I'm kind of just trying to make the community aware of that. Thank you.
Tom Widrow will be followed by Simon Drone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tom Widrow, City Watch, Santa Barbara City Watch. It's come to our attention, and I think I've talked to this council about this before, is that there is a move across the country to, for local municipalities to increase the minimum wage, and at City Watch, we're concerned with the overall economic health of vitality of Santa Barbara, as are you, of course. And I just want to bring to your attention that recently Walmart pulled out of building two stores in the District of Columbia that would have provided hundreds of jobs, not to mention low-priced goods and services for a lot of people in a poor area that really need it. And the reason they cited behind closed doors was city council and their Economic Development Commission was precisely because of the minimum wage increase. They want to, there's a November ballot there in DC to push it to 15 bucks an hour, not unlike Los Angeles and Seattle and other places. So, I just want to say, this is going to come in front of this council potentially this year. And there was another thing, another reason they cited, there's a ballot agenda item that proposes for local businesses to pay into a fund for family medical leave, as also imposing a minimum hourly requirement on restaurants and other small businesses to employ their staff. Santa Barbara's tourist-based economy, as you well know, we have great restaurants, and a lot of folks, a lot of small businesses depend on make their living and make Santa Barbara a special place because of that. And if you want to read any number of, you know, dozens and dozens of scholarly studies from both the left and the right, it generally says that the people who are hurt the most by minimum wage increases artificially set, not set by the market, are those who need entry-level jobs, and it also pushes institutions to do, make more, they do with fewer people on staff, and they also go towards automation as well. So, we're there on this, and I just want to keep you abreast of that as well. Thank you.
Simon Drone will be followed by Paul Kowalski.
It's probably been at least 10 years since I've spoke before the council, and there are three concerns that I have, and I realize that I won't be able to address them all to the extent I want to at this point. One is the noise ordinance, which I understand you is going through the process still. I highly support it. I hope it is citywide. I live by the junior high school, Santa Barbara Junior High, and I am being subjected to a subwoofer at 11:00 at night, at 12:00 at night, to beer pong parties till 1:00 in the morning. I am living in fear, as are some of my other neighbors, that we, at this point in time, need to utilize a citizen's arrest in order to affect any attention. The police don't normally come for a couple of hours. As it is, the system is not real good right now. I just noticed this clock. That's great. Anyway, that's one of my frustrations. Another one is my neighbor on the other side, and not all my neighbors are bad by any means, but one of my neighbors used to rent to one of the prominent heroin traffic, heroin trafficking families in Santa Barbara. This according to several police officers that I've talked to. And this particular neighbor probably has three illegal units, is renting to one person who goes around the city three times a day collecting cans and bottles from wherever, I don't know, and brings them back and processes them next door to my house. And I, once again, fear for my safety, my family's safety, my tenants' safety, by having to use a zoning enforcement complaint system that requires me to have a name. Now, why there's not a secret witness?
You need to wind up, please.
Type of vehicle for that, I don't know. The city of LA has a yearly enforcement.
You do need to wind up if you --
All right. They have a yearly enforcement that's not complaint-based, and thirdly, I will leave you with this regarding vehicles.
No, I'm sorry, you are way over.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen, Helene.
Thank you. I'm just trying to be fair to everyone.
You'll hear from me again. Thank you.
That's just fine. Paul Kowalski, and is Trudy Thompson here? Yeah, you're waiving your two minutes? Okay, so, you have up to four minutes, and then Anthony Pritts.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Paul Kowalski, and I'm here today to thank you for your service to the community and share some information with you. I spoke to you at the last city council meeting regarding medical marijuana. I was moved by the concern shown by the mayor and her recommendation to revisit the issue in April and some of the questions by the city council members. Some of the questions showed a need for additional --
I'm sorry, I'm going to stop the clock. Are you here about the ordinance that we're, is something separate?
No, ma'am. I'm simply going to talk in general.
Okay, then go right ahead. All right, go right ahead. Keep going.
Some of the questions showed a need for some additional information and clarification. Since there's not enough time to tell you what I would like to, I am giving you a book called The Cannabis Manifesto, and I will refer to the titles of Chapter Four and Five as thoughts to perhaps influence you, to choose cannabis for wellness, not intoxication, and that cannabis reform can harm, does not harm communities, it strengthens them. I give you this because I would like to be able to operate from a position of knowledge and truth. Please remember the position of knowledge and truth as I continue my statement. The second item I would like to comment on are some of the statements made by staff at the last city council meeting. Staff came here and gave us a list of all the cities that had bans. I don't know how many of them were wrong, but I don't know how they can mess up Gallita when it's so close. Staff said that Gallita had a dispensary delivery and grow ban in place, when in fact, they have two open and operating dispensaries that have been there for years, and in the December meeting decided to regulate delivery services like taxis. Staff then went on to make a presentation whereby they said anyone who grew cannabis in a 10-by-10 room would be making about $565,000 per year. Really? Has that been a problem for the city where too many of your residents are making $565,000 in a spare bedroom? So, I'm here to show you that growing cannabis in 10-by-10 space, and I'll move over here so I can put these up there.
Okay, but you are now talking about the ordinance, so I'm going to give, you have two minutes. I'm going to give, I'm going to let you speak to it at the item. I'm just trying, this is for public comment, for items not on the agenda, and so, when we go to the, when we go to the calendar to adopt the ordinance, you can address it then, okay?
Okay, so --
I'll just call you up at that point.
Fine.
Thank you.
Oh, is it on the agenda today?
Right. We're adopting, it's on the agenda to adopt today. That's why I asked you earlier. Yep. Anthony Pritts, or is it Prites, and then Bob Hanson.
Hi, City Council. This is the first time I've been here. I lived 15 years on the streets, on Melpus Street in the bushes, and I went to Paff, and I want to begin like this. It's legal to buy cigarettes in the store, and there's smoking hours in the shelter. We're chased out of the shelter. We're not allowed to smoke on public property. We have to go down to the security guard. We have to go down two blocks to smoke a cigarette. And it's an LA-based program, I heard. I heard it came from LA. You guys made a deal, but I'm back with McGruder in the Lilian Childs Estate when it came in to trade for the drinking privileges, for the shelter, and it's just, it's not fair. I'm just complaining about the smoking hours. Thanks.
Bob Hanson will be followed by Patrick Malone, and then the final speaker will be Cruzito Cruz.
If Patrick's going to give you the two minutes, but he has four minutes left.
Okay. There you go.
I handed this monacido journal to a few people, and there was a letter, anonymous tip. I sent this to the Santa Barbara mayor, Helene Schneider, and the rest of city council. So, I talked to the mayor earlier. She said she read it. This letter is so hateful. This person says they have a business on Cana Perdido, and people are screaming, and they're crazies, and they're out there between 7:30 and 1:00, and I've been out there just recently and seen how people are going to McDonald's and other places, and they wake up, and some of these things that he said were just, you know, it's almost like, "Don't go down on State Street because your life's threatened. They're crazies." That's not the right word to say, and you read the article. And so, anyway, I think we really need to stop things like that. There was an article in The Sentinel not too long ago, and it was about the Wizard of Id and how he's hanging around, and the college kids are coming to drink, and that was a crazy one. And then, recently, there was a guy that wrote, just in the news press, about how we need to take Delagar Plaza, put it underground garage, then we can have picnics again because those transients or whatever, we want to call them names, and all we call them, young urban travelers, and that was one of the reasons why the shelter went to a warming center, because we don't want to encourage people to have a real winter shelter, which used to be from December 1st to April 1st, and there were a lot of days when we didn't need to have it open, but it was, that was the deal that happened, and it happened for many years. So, anyway, I still have two minutes left. I would like to see President Obama sign an executive action before he gets out of office to have surplus military buildings used with the National Guard, AmeriCorps, Red Cross, and really get into using like our armory over here on Melpus. People are always wanting to say it's going to turn into vocational school or other things. Get that going, because communities all across the nation need to get things going. It's like Black Lives Matter. They need jobs. Homeless, they need a place to be and understood, because each one's different, and it's pretty amazing how they really are nice people, because if you go to the library, which is our day center now, a lot of nice people there, and it looks like they want to open up either Earl Warren or the armory over here for a day center. There's $90,000, just that and the other from the county. But, you know, the vet building down at the beach is run by the county, and they're saying they want to spend $400 for every 12 hours to open a day center. I think we can do better. Anywho, even in the library, I talked to one of the librarians, they have the Faulkner Gallery, and there's two little rooms off the side. Those little, two little rooms could be used to have, you know, some kind of order instead of what's happening at the library, because everyone's all worried that the library looks like it's a homeless shelter and a day center. Anyway, I've only got 39 seconds. So, you know, President Obama, if he signed an executive action before he gets out of office, we have surplus military buildings and National Guard working on it, and AmeriCorps, and the Red Cross, and the homeless people, and the people that want to see our community get better instead of waging these wars, because what we're waging in Santa Barbara on State Street happens all across the nation against people that don't have housing, and it's sad, and a society is judged on how it treats its less fortunate. And so, we can sit there and say, "This is what we are, and we can do better." Thank you.
Thank you. Cruzito Cruz will be the final public speaker.
Good afternoon, good evening. Buenas tardes a todos, Councilwoman Helene Schneider, and district members and at-large members at this moment. In 2017, I promised I'll spend $100,000 on my campaign to get elected. Point apart, District One has a lot of issues. Gaya Cesar Chavez properties should be looked at as a community investment. It's an underutilization of the property as public lands. One has to be fixated that we use it as a community place and not for tourism dollars. Be it that we're a tourist-based economy, we're taking away from community feelings. We're taking that whole Santa Barbara theme from Santa Barbara. We're having less vacation rentals in the exterior and more vacation rentals in the interior District One and Two. We have to look at that, because it's creating less of a community and more of a tourist. If we're going to buy ourselves for economics instead of community empowerment and people, these are the predecessors that we got to blame. But I remember talking about California Voting Rights Act in 2009, '11. Very reluctant was our public leadership and very silent on the subject, that they legally acquiesced, they paid out the plaintiffs through Margaret Leone during the fall, your own defense expert attorney paying plaintiffs in the fall through political contribution forms. That's nasty. But today, I do promise that our community is better. Why? Quote-unquote, "We have two Chicanos on the city council." Political power, Chicano power.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. There's some items to read.
Item number two, adoption of ordinance regulating cultivation of marijuana, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Section 28.87.300 to the Santa Barbara Municipal Code to regulate cannabis cultivation. Item number three, adoption of ordinance to prohibit parking over 72 hours in city-owned parking lots, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the municipal code by adding Section 10.44.153 regarding penalties for vehicle parking over 72 hours upon municipally-owned parking lots and amending Section 10.44.152 pertaining to regulation of parking upon municipally-owned and/or operated parking lots. Item number four, adoption of ordinance for the grant of easements to the Santa Barbara County Flood Control District Cota Bridge Replacement Project, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the granting of easements on city-owned properties adjacent to Mission Creek, to the County of Santa Barbara Flood Control and Water Conservation District for flood control and all related purposes, and authorizing the city administrator to execute as necessary the easement deeds in a form approved by the city attorney. Item number 11, compensation survey for treatment and patrol employees, new classification, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 15-056, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 2016 affecting the Public Works Department effective January 26, 2016. Item number 12, adoption of ordinance for transfer of Cali Caesar Chavez property to the successor agency, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the transfer of all right, title, and interest to real property commonly known as Cali Caesar Chavez properties owned by the City of Santa Barbara, a municipal corporation, and the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Santa Barbara, and authorizing the city administrator to execute such documents as necessary to effectuate such transfer of real property interest to the successor agency, to the redevelopment agency of the City of Santa Barbara.
Okay, without further objection, we'll waive further reading. I know we have a couple of speaker slips here on item two. Any other items to pull off of consent?
11, Madam Mayor.
11, okay. All right. Item two is the adoption of the ordinance regulating cultivation of marijuana. So, Mr. Kowalski, you have your next two minutes. Come on up. There you go. You finished what you started. Want to --
Is that going to shoot me?
Yeah, we'll turn that on.
Will that work?
There we go.
Anyway, so, I just wanted to show you the numbers.
If you'd please come to the mics. Yep, thank you.
So, I just wanted to show you the numbers to justify my statement. If you're going to -- to put marijuana outdoors, basically, you're going to plant it in the spring, you're going to grow it, you'll harvest it in the fall. You'll be very lucky to get, I'm going to do that one, huh? You'll be very lucky to get eight pounds out of that. And then the, I haven't really put any time in it, $200 to trim a pound, subtract that cost, and you're basically at $4,300. And then I'm going to show you indoor. So this is what an indoor setup would look like. It requires...
Do you want to turn on the mic right there? You can.
This one? Is it working?
It's on? Okay, great.
Okay. So the veg requires 18 hours to keep it in the vegetative state till it's big enough to bloom. So you see the small ones, they'd be there for two months, then the bigger ones, two months. After four months, you could move them in to bloom. You keep them there for two months. So every month, you'd be able to harvest three plants. So basically, it's six months to the first harvest. It's going to require lights and equipment, yield half to three-quarters of a pound per light. So harvesting three plants per month would probably yield somewhere around a pound, maybe a pound and a half if you were really lucky, per month. Your electricity cost would be somewhere around $500 bucks. It's going to take at least two hours a day of your time every day, seven days a week. I didn't include rent. I just included that as a sunk cost. There's going to be nutrients. And then I did a three-year depreciation on the $2,000 worth of equipment for $57 a month, so it's $1197 a month. So the total value of a pound of indoor marijuana is $2,500, less $200 to trim it, less $1197 expenses. You have $1,103. You multiply that by a harvest each month, times 12, 13, 236, bearing in mind the first year, you're going to wait about six months before anything's ready to harvest.
Thank you very much. Tom Widrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Had some comment in our steering committee about the implications of cultivation in the city and whether or not, and maybe this is for a later agenda item, but it's associated with you approving cultivation, is there a more expense that comes, goes to the city for things like law enforcement? I seem to hear from some other city managers that, you know, there's more crime, and there's more regulation, more attention that needs to be given by a city to those places that dispense medical marijuana or cultivate them. So I guess the question is, is, you know, City Watch isn't necessarily in favor of certainly gratuitous tax increases, but is a tax a consideration on the cultivation of marijuana, and would that go directly towards being able to manage this, since it's a new thing for Santa Barbara? So that's my question.
Thank you. I think just to answer that question, when we directed staff to come back in April, and a whole variety of items, including those, will be addressed at that point. Ms. Mario, your light's on.
I just need to vote no on that item, ma'am.
Okay, so is there a motion for item number two?
Moved.
Moved by Rouse, second by Hotchkiss. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, that's 6-1 with Maria opposed. Thank you. And then item 11, if you could read item 11. Deborah?
Compensation survey for treatment and patrol employees, new classification. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to just get a little more information on this. It sounds like this effort has resulted in the full use of the money that was budgeted for that. But I'm not getting from this report, and maybe I just wasn't reading it closely enough, about how much off we were in these salaries.
You're correct, Councilmember White. We did the salary survey. There were some positions that were as much as 8% to 10% off the labor market. The reopeners that we have in the existing agreement was limited to just over $50,000. But we do have an agreement to talk about any remaining inequities during the rest of this year, and we will be bringing those to you as part of our discussions with the treatment and patrol unit to discuss whether and how to address those remaining inequities as part of that negotiation process.
So we don't have a, there's not a total number that's sort of created out of this of, you know, what the discrepancy was at this point?
Well, there is. We have a, we do have a total number. We were going to bring that to you as part of the ongoing negotiations to address those.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by, I think, White and second by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, that's unanimous. Okay. A report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Hart.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee discussed the second quarter fiscal agent and investment reports, and they were approved under item 7 of the consent calendar.
Okay. And then report from the Ordnance Committee, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Ordnance Committee discussed our revision, our city noise ordinance, specifically focusing on the areas around the neighborhoods and some ambient noise, hoping that at some point in time, the council will direct us to look further into other issues that happen around the city. But for right now, we're going forward the noise ordinance, forwarding it to you as approved unanimously.
Great. Okay, item number 15, Police Department update. Well, we just need the police department to give us an update. So I know they're here. They're in the other room. Okay, this is the last time you get to be late to one of these updates, chief. Just kidding. Oh, of course, that must be it. Whenever you're ready, chief.
Much. Good afternoon, everyone. We've got quite a bit to talk about. We're going to go as quickly as possible and ready for your questions. You can interrupt at any time or save the questions for the end, whatever your pleasure is. Today's presentation, we're really going to dive heavily at the beginning on staffing levels, the recruitment that we promised you we would come back with other ideas and other things that we're already in the progress of doing. So it's going to take a little bit of time to go through all of it, but I'm sure you'll appreciate it. It's some of the things that Councilman Hart had brought up a couple of months ago, and we're ready to answer any questions, but we're going to dive deeply into that. Our Patrol Division update will be next, then the Investigative Division update, and then a little bit of CompStat for you with the deputy chief. We'll talk about our violent crime and property crime updates and where we are with that. And then, of course, as many questions as we can take as possible. So I'm going to turn it over to my Administrative Services Division. Lieutenant Todd Stoney, as you know, Captain Torres is retiring in a few days, actually, next month. And I have promoted, have announced my promotion of Lieutenant Stoney to Captain Stoney once Gill is retired. But Todd's going to do the majority of this. He's been working very hard with Captain Torres and his recruitment staff, Dave Henderson and Sadie Lumen, in putting some of these things together for you. That's going to take most of our presentation today, so I'm going to turn it right over to my staff.
Madam Mayor, Council, good afternoon. So let's take a look at the first slide. This is our current police officer strength in our Patrol Division. We are authorized 143 officers. We currently have 130 filled positions, which leaves us vacant 13. Percentage-wise, we're 91% filled in terms of authorized strength for police officer. So our current challenge is, we have our 13 vacancies. Anticipated in next six months, we have seven more. That'll either be medical retirements or retirements for service retirements, people who have reached their time to retire and enjoy their time off. In that time, we anticipate nine recruit hires and five laterals. We are currently testing for an academy that starts in April, and we're doing another open-entry testing on Friday with 550 applications that are currently at Human Resources. So we'd like to, between now and June, hire 14 people. Losing the seven, we anticipate that by June of 2006, we'll then have changed the 13 vacancies to six, meaning we'll be 96% filled at that time. We have had to do some accelerated hiring due to the following that's happened. We started tracking this in November of 2014. We had 10 longevity service retirements. We had four premature medical service retirements. We had eight people lateral to other departments. Those were UCSB, Newport Beach, Tustin, and Los Catos. In terms of our ongoing police officer hiring efforts, we have five officers who are in our second phase of our field training program. They'll move into the third phase and the final phase, and then be out on the streets, hopefully within the next two to three months. We currently have four cadets in the Ventura County Sheriff's Academy. We started with seven, and we had three who left. They were voluntary resignations. And our graduation date is April 8, 2016, to get those four into our FTO program. For our current academy that starts April 11 of this year, we have 14 candidates in the background process. 23 started the backgrounds. We've disqualified nine, but those, the remaining 14 have all made it through the polygraph. It's one of the big steps in the hiring process. So in terms of our ongoing police officer hiring efforts, we have one lateral applicant in background. Like I talked about earlier, we have open-entry testing scheduled for this Friday, January 29. We have 550 applications on file at Human Resources. If we look at in the past, the number of people we had put in applications versus the number that showed up, we usually have, we're anticipating 180 to 200 people actually show up for the written test on Friday. We certainly invite you to be there if you'd like to see the process. We are doing a written test at both 8:00 and 11:30 at the Cabrillo Bass House, and at 3:00, we'll be out on the Cabrillo Ball Field during the physical fitness portion of the testing. And that's just Friday. We also have scheduled a week of oral board interviews on February 1, and that's for 20 academy graduates, eight laterals, and two city promotionals. We did a testing process within the city several months ago, and we have two that are continuing on in the process. In terms of additional hiring, the police department is doing dispatcher. We just hired two dispatchers. It started last week, and we have eight more in background. And for the community service officer position, we have five backgrounds currently in progress. We talked about some of the strategies or some of the things that we're trying to do to get those 14 hires in the next, by June of this year. We currently have a full-page advertisement in Porec Magazine soliciting lateral applicants. That'll be in for the next four months. It started running in December and runs through March. We are working on advertising contracts with the following, KUIT and Fox 11, 30-second commercials for PD hiring, Metropolitan Theaters. We had a 30-second screen advertisement that we put in before the last testing. We are re-upping that for nine more weeks before our next testing. We just signed a contract with Signal Solutions. They're at a UCSB. It's a kiosk system. It's a full banner-sized recruitment for open entry. They move it about the campus. It'll be a 12-month. They go to different locations on campus. Every three weeks, they move it around the campus. And we just signed a contract with United States Military Recruitment. They deal with all branches of the military. They deal with service members who are timing out and are looking for jobs in the community. What we included that, there's a webpage that's always up. We have an advertisement on that. They send out quarterly magazine that will have a full-page add-in, followed by four recruitment fairs across California that will have a booth set up to be there and answer any questions that they have about the Santa Barbara Police Department. Continuing, we are in development with city finance right now to hire a local marketing firm to update our social media and our printed advertisement material. And in a personnel move, we recently moved Sergeant Casapis, who is seated behind me. Sergeant Casapis is a Santa Barbara local. He was born and raised in Santa Barbara, went to Santa Barbara High School, graduated from Cal Poly University, and he's actively going out, and he's going to seek out those laterals and the academy graduates that we need in the community. In fact, on Thursdays, hang down to San Diego and give a presentation to a academy class there. So that's some of the new things that we're doing, and we're excited about having Charlie to help us out.
Mr. Dominguez.
I'd like to ask a few questions about the timing. So it looks like you're anticipating hiring seven by June. Is that correct?
What we'd like to do is hire 14 by June. We're anticipating seven, seven people who leave in that by June, so we'll have a total addition of seven officers.
And those would be drawn from the five officers in the second phase and the four cadets?
No, sir. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, can we go back to that slide?
Page 6.
So we currently have the 13 vacancies. We anticipate seven more leaving in the next six months. So what we'd like to, our hiring goal between now and June is to hire nine recruits with this current class that we have, the 14 in background, and then we're testing on Friday, and then add initial five laterals or academy graduates based on Sergeant Casapis going out and some of our advertising material, which would give us a total hire between now and June of 14 people. But we also, like I said, anticipate seven people leaving, so we'd increase our strength by seven by hiring 14 and losing seven between now and June.
Okay. And what is the timeline for lateral hires? I'm guessing it's, is it shorter than the other pipeline?
Well, the nice thing about laterals is they've already gone through an academy, so they're certified. If it's somebody who's been through a California academy, they're already certified in the state of California to be a police officer. So instead of having to send them to a six-month academy, what we're basically doing is bringing them in, putting them through our FTO program, which is usually an accelerated FTO program. They don't need the full 14 weeks, and we get them on the street much quicker. Same thing with the academy graduates. Many of them have self-sponsored themselves through the academy, so they already have a post certificate to be a police officer. They just need to go to an FTO program.
Thank you for answering these questions. I realize I have to adjust my style. The last time I was asking questions of police officers, it was as a sworn prosecutor, as a DA. So I'm sorry if I came off as cross-examining, but that's what I'm used to. Thank you.
You'll get used to it. Is there any chance, actually, since we're talking about this, of increasing the laterals from five to something else, or you just think that's just what's most likely in terms of the number of laterals that can come over?
Madam Mayor, we haven't opened up for laterals in a number of years, so this is our first time that we are getting a pool of laterals in. We've seen a huge increase in the number of applications since we put the ad in the Porec Magazine. We do have eight potentials coming in next week to do an oral interview. So it's more of this time based on the number of people that we're seeing. Obviously, we have to really screen those people well and make sure we understand why they're leaving the agency that they're currently employed with, and we don't want to bring a problem to Santa Barbara. We won't do that. We're not going to lower our standards to do that. But we think five is a fair number based on what we're currently seeing in terms of the applications being received by HR.
Great. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on this item, or should we keep going? Okay. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Countess Stoney, are there, in the terms of recruiting pool and whatnot, are there criminal justice programs in any local schools currently?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, in terms of our, like, Santa Barbara City College or...
I mean, anywhere from Hancock down, anywhere in the area. I remember years ago, I remember there was one in Long Beach, but I don't remember specifically UCSB or City College or Hancock or anybody that has.
UCSB and City College do not, but Allen Hancock does have an academy that they're running. It's run a little bit different than the Ventura County Academy. It's certainly an option for us. We've been very successful with using the Ventura County Academy, but they're now running at a different time, which is very nice. So we have an academy that starts every six months in Ventura, and they're running at a three-month, different than Ventura. So we certainly are looking at that as an option if we have qualified candidates.
I think I was thinking more along the lines of an academic, four-year, like, bachelor's program that doesn't exist.
Nothing like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The forecasted officer strength of 96%, is that, I guess this I should address to the chief, is that typical, or forces usually always slightly under?
Probably most of the time, due to, mostly to injuries.
What's the why?
Mostly the injuries that causes those numbers to go down. And when we get really, truly unanticipated retirements, that sets us back as well. So, you know, it's just a revolving door, and we just never know.
A different question. You mentioned that the mayor and the council are invited to see the interviews. I didn't get where those are.
No, it's not the interviews. They're testing.
Oh, testing.
At two times that day. And then what you, you know, I wouldn't expect anyone to go in there and watch somebody take a written test unless you really have a lack of sleep and you want to fall asleep. But what we're inviting you to, so you can, actually, you can even talk to them if you want to, are the candidates that will go across the street to do the physical agility, so you can see live and in color the physical things that we look for that day. we looked for that day, and they're all there together. And that's the invitation.
Is that at the department?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be at the Cabrillo Ball Fields.
Oh, Cabrillo Ball Field.
Yeah.
We rented out the Cabrillo Ball Fields. We set up the six-foot wall and
What time?
Three o'clock is the start on Friday. And hopefully, we have 200 candidates out there running.
Okay. One more question, if I could. You mentioned the advertising or publicizing media that you're doing. Is there anything, are we adding anything new there, or this is, are these the ones we've done, used traditionally?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Hotchkiss, no, this is all new. We haven't had an advertising budget before. It's something that we've worked with the city administrator, and we've identified some new means. The advertising to theaters was the first time we did anything formally, and we felt it was successful. So we're going to expand that. One of the things that we've really found is that hiring local people, they tend to stay local. I'm a perfect example. I, I grew up in Santa Barbara. I, after college, went to Colorado. I was hired as a police officer there. I love being a police officer, but I really miss Santa Barbara. And I came back, and I've been here for 25 years now. So we're really trying to focus our hiring, especially the open entry, on local people. And the way to do that is get into our local media.
Right. I'm glad to see we're being a little bit more aggressive than we were in the past. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I agree. This is great. I saw the advertisement at the movie theaters and was very excited when I saw that. And this advertisement in PORAC is really prominent. And it's interesting to look at the other agencies and what, the way they're advertising too. It'd be helpful for us to look at that salary ranges and comparable things that are, that we're highlighting. Just a couple of questions about the total level of staffing. So if we're shooting for this 137 number, how many officers are out on medical now? So what is, I forget the, the terms. We've got the, you know, the, the strength versus the, what are the operating strength versus authorized strength versus functional strength? There we go. So this is the functional strength? What is the functional?
Anaxed, visual.
Those words.
Madam Mayor, council members, Captain Marizita is going to handle that in his portion when he talks about patrol strength. He can certainly come up now and answer that question if you'd like.
That's fine. I can read. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we move on with the presentation? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. Captain Marizita from the Patrol Division of the Police Department. I'd like to start with an update of our patrol staffing, and I think this may answer your question, sir. For the most part, I do have most of the injuries and people on IOD are in the Patrol Division. There are also some that are currently being held in the, in the Investigative Division, and Captain Altavilla will speak to those. As far as the Patrol Division update, first, Patrol Division staffing, just as an overview, if we were fully staffed, we would have 100 sworn officers in the Patrol Division. That would include myself, down to the patrol officers, our P-1 patrol officers. So that would include 18 managers and supervisors, lieutenants, sergeants, and one captain. We're currently at 15 filled and healthy sergeants and managers. Our patrol teams would currently, would have 57 if we were fully staffed, and we currently have 47 currently on our patrol teams. And our specialized units would have 25, and we're currently at 13 fully healthy specialized officers in filled spots. So currently, 75 fully healthy and in-the-field officers, up to myself, out of the 100 sworn in the Patrol Division. That leaves 25 officers and sergeants down in the Patrol Division due to injuries and vacancies. 17 officers or sergeants that are currently assigned to the Patrol Division are injured or on otherwise other list, aren't showing up for patrol for one reason or another. That's about double our typical, typical average, which is usually seven, eight, nine, something like that. So as Lieutenant Stony mentioned, we, we currently have the, the challenges with, with recruitment, but also, we're having this, sort of this double whammy with our challenges with our injured, our injured list is quite high. So both of those working together is causing some Patrol Division staffing, obviously, and also in some of the other divisions. I expect to have two of these officers back to full duty within a month, but then there's a possibility I may be losing, losing one to another department also. I'm expecting that. Our current vacancies in our specialized assignments, as I mentioned, we have 12 vacancies currently. Three of those are being held in traffic, two in our nightlife enforcement team, which is the entire nightlife enforcement team, two in our gang suppression team, four in our criminal impact team, which that, that team is also suspended, and one in our tactical patrol force team. Any further questions on patrol staffing before I move on? Or I can take it at the end?
I think I do have a question. Did you say the entire nightlife, nightlife enforcement team is out?
Yes. Typically, we would have two officers assigned to nightlife enforcement, and currently we have none.
So how long do we expect that to go on?
It depends on how fast we can get our staffing levels back up to appropriate level to start filling those specialized positions, and how fast I can get some of my injured officers back to full duty.
Do you recall how long that, those positions have been vacant?
Well, one of those positions was, was filled as of, I believe it was November. The middle of November was when we pulled that last officer back.
Okay. So I'm trying to see. I'm just wondering, how long has it been since we've had people down on the street like that in nightlife enforcement?
Well, we still have people down there on, on the, on the bar closing hours, but it's not, it's a little more hit and miss depending on our calls for service, where we don't have a dedicated officer down there right now that's down there full-time, 40 hours a week.
Okay. So we just, the ordinance committee had, the, the noise problem down there came up. And I guess those officers, if they're there, at other than closing hours, sometimes address that, do they not?
Yes. We'll respond to any calls for service down there, but what we don't have is a 40-hour-a-week presence for proactive enforcement in that downtown area right now.
Okay. I'm sure it's missed. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you said two were down in the gang unit. How many are left in the gang unit, sir?
When we were fully staffed, we had four people and a sergeant, four officers and a sergeant in that unit. Currently, we have two officers in that unit being supervised by a patrol sergeant.
Okay. And did you mention the restorative policing unit as well? I'm sorry.
I did not. That's not in my division.
Oh, understood.
It's in administrative services, but I'm sure we can get any question, answer that you have for that.
Thank you.
If I could add something, in terms of the, you know, gang crime is down, bombing crime is down in terms of gang-related. I think that's, it's impacted by our PAL program, our Explorer program, the schools and the partnerships that we have. But I will tell you that I have 143 gang officers. Every police officer is a gang officer. We respond to calls for service in terms of that type of issue. Certainly, the patrol officers who are not officially in the gang unit, I know our individuals who we need to address from time to time and during our calls for service and our normal patrols, we still watch out for that. The gang unit is, when they're out there in strength, even with just the two of them, they're really dealing with some one-on-one contacts with individuals that we're looking for. But we're continually vigilant in terms of gang crime, possible gang crime and gang calls for service. So we still respond just as aggressively. On the other end, on Captain Altavilla's crew with his youth services sergeant, those are detectives that work gang issues as well. So we wish we had more still working in it, but we've had to make some adjustments to make sure that we handle the calls for service first. But we're just as aggressive. We just, we're doing more with less, but we're still addressing it.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
So as the, as Sergeant Kessapis is really successful and adds additional officers to the force, what is your strategy to, to deploy them, to fill these gaps? Is it, I guess you can't say with certainty because it depends if it's a lateral, if somebody comes with some specialty, they may likely go to, hopefully to that specialty. Or is that how it works? You really have to just look at the resources that you have and then allocate it? Because, you know, looking at it from our side of the dais, we have these holes that we're hearing from community members, you know, that, and there's, everybody has a specific interest from their constituency, whether it's downtown, or whether it's restorative policing, or whether it's the school resource officers. You know, we sort of, it's helpful to us to have a sense as to what to tell people. You know, we're recruiting additional officers, trying to get folks in there. But, you know, is there, do you have, how will these things be backfilled?
Our, our number one priority in terms of the backfill would be to patrol. We really need to get people answering calls for service for our community. Certainly, downtown's a priority, Milpus is a priority, the beach, the hotels. You know, we're, we're chasing the radio, and we're, we're not letting go. We're not, we're not slowing down. So we continue to do that. And I understand their frustration because we're just as frustrated. So we, we obviously have competing priorities, but we consider everything that we do a priority. But really, the number one thing and what we're all about is when our residents pick up that phone and want a blue suit in their front door in six minutes or less, that's really the number one priority. The other things are important, but we want to make sure that even with laterals that come in, even if they have specialized experience, we probably would not put them in a specialty because we have other people that have been here a long time that know the city more. I think when we get the laterals in, and I'm sure we'll get some fine ones, they need to learn our city. They need to learn our system. They need to learn the Santa Barbara way before we start deploying them into specialty units. And I think the best way to do that is to put them in patrol to answer that call for service, to get to know the, the communities that we serve. And that's really priority number one in terms of assigning laterals in the future.
And that's where you have the 47, you have 50, 60 officers there authorized, and you have 47 actually. So you've got, you're down 13, is that, at patrol?
Down 13 at patrol. We're down 10, 10 on our patrol teams.
Okay.
And 12 in our specialized units.
Okay. So the first thing that's going to get filled by these new is that 10 gap?
Sure. Would you like to?
Yeah. That, that's our hope. That's our hope. However, we, we're going to be flexible because it does, it does bring us some angst, if you will, with not having as an example the nightlife enforcement there full-time. That's a real concern for us. The other thing in Santa Barbara is our traffic issues.
Right.
And our motor unit is, is down by a few officers. We need to get people back on the motors. When we fill those spots in patrol, we need to start talking about motor officers and things like that. The other priority, restorative policing.
Right.
So again, competing priorities that we want to get to. We're going to be flexible as we get people in. I mean, if we get a person from another department with, with some great experience in a certain area that is one of our priorities, we will probably be flexible and maybe do something by assigning them there. None of this is set in stone. We're certainly going to take it as the hires come in and move along those lines with patrol being the number one thing. But we, we definitely need to get our motors back out there for traffic, traffic enforcement. But we, we don't have very many right now because they're working patrol.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I, there's no good choices when you're, when you're down.
No. They're all, they're all bad choices, but we have to make, we have to make some of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, would this be the right time to talk about the community service officers? Would this be the, the time in your presentation?
I am going to give a complete brief on that here in a second.
Okay. I'll wait my, for my questions on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. That's all the questions for now. So keep going.
Okay. I'll move on to the next point. I want to speak a little bit about a new patrol schedule that we just implemented, actually, the last couple of days. The way this came about was Chief Sanchez met with all of the sergeants in the patrol division, actually department-wide, and talked about just issues and things like that. And one of the common threads that he heard was that the current patrol schedule that we were, we were deploying officers with was difficult to manage. There was no team, sort of team policing philosophy behind it. It was difficult to schedule training for our officers and some other officer dissatisfaction with our schedule. So Chief Sanchez directed myself and my management team to work with our Police Officers Association to, to come up with a, a different schedule or look at some other possibilities of a patrol schedule. The POA did a, a survey of their members, came up with a lot of good ideas. We looked at a lot of different plans. Obviously, the first sort of filter for the, each plan would have to be that it would meet the community's needs and that would, we'd be able to put the citizens of Santa Barbara first. So we, we decided on a new plan, and we went to that plan at the, two days ago to all, for all of our patrol officers. So just real briefly, I don't want to get into all the specifics, but our officers now will have a choice between working a four 10-hour days or three 12-and-a-half hour days per week, and it's based on seniority. The new plan comes to us with team policing. So we have one supervisor who's supervising an entire team for an entire six months. So there's some more accountability there. The officers like it too because they're working with the same officers every day of the week for the same hours. So there's a lot of positives with the new schedule, and I'll be giving you another update in three months when we're back here on how that's working out for us. But, and like I said, it's just the first two days in the, with the new schedule. So we'll, we'll get back some feedback to you. The last point on this first slide was our community service officer program. Currently, we have six community service officer positions filled. And as Lieutenant Stony mentioned, we have five more candidates that are in the background process. We expect that we may lose a couple of those CSOs sometime in the near future. So our promise has been to make sure that we have people sort of in the pipeline to get those positions filled as quickly as possible. So we do have five in the, in the background process right now, and we're, we're definitely going to try to hire at least up to six and even up to eight. We do have some significant salary savings this year. We can absorb some of those additional costs in our current budget. So that's our plan. We are continuing with seven-day-a-week coverage on both weekdays and week, weekends, and it's continuing to be a high priority for the Police Department because we know it's high priority for you. We've been getting a lot of positive feedback. We're working through some little minor glitches, but it seems like overall that the, the program's been fairly successful so far. Next slide.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, that's a good, a good start. And the, the yellow shirts and the blue shirts, perhaps you can talk, speak to them as well?
Yeah, we currently have two of the yellow shirts. The, the blue shirts is, are actually in a different division, I believe, if we have two. Is that correct? Yes. So two yellow shirts and two blue shirts currently.
Thank you. And then going forward, where are we? We are, how far into the CSO program? How long has that been in place now?
Well, we, we sort of got the thing up and running, fully running at the beginning of this fiscal year. We, we did hire some people before that, but they weren't fully trained until July 1st, as you might recall. But I think we started hiring in about April, and when we actually started spending the money, $150,000. And then we got up to about five at around July 1st at the beginning of the fiscal year when they've actually were completely fully trained.
Those seven months or so is what we're?
About that, yeah.
So, and then as the fiscal year, so this will definitely be, as we look, as we do our budget activities, we'll, we'll have our, our annual sort of information to, to look at. And I'll be very interested to hear about, again, hours, how, how many hours folks are, are, are on the, on, on the beat, as it were, as well as in the, at one point, when we talked about particularly the yellow shirts, we were talking about people being on Milpus Street and being on the waterfront. And just in the future, I'd appreciate hearing about any, any efforts that are, that are, we've been able to, to make to extend those, those services to those other areas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Has the turnover for the CSOs been more or less than you anticipated?
I think it's been a little less personally. We've, we've kept everybody that, that we've hired so far. So I don't think we've had any, any turnover. One left for a little bit and came right back after a few months. But other than that, I don't think we've had any turnover. So, yeah.
Any highlights in terms of the experience that they're encountering, you know, the, what they're offering to the public, what kind of citations they're issuing? Just, you know, it's, we're at sort of the six-point month point. Anything that you'd want to share with us about?
Well, I can, yeah, I can tell you, in, I did pull some stats for the, the last three months of last year, last calendar year. We worked, the CSOs worked about 1,740 hours total walking downtown. They made 1,176 business contacts, 1,100 warnings to people riding their skateboards on the, on the sidewalk, bicycles, those kinds of things, and issued 123 sites, citations during that, that three months of, of last year. So, like I said, we've been getting a lot of positive feedback through the chief's office, and I've been getting a lot of positive feedback from the meetings I attend with council. So seems to me like the program's been pretty successful so far.
Good. Thank you. Good, thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you. Just one, one add-on to that is we had talked about even with the, back with the yellow shirts when that was all there was, was are any calls for service coming in? I know that was at least one of the possibilities with this extra, these extra sets of eyes and, and ears is, is the ability to have calls for service coming. So if that information isn't available now, perhaps that could be when we look at it on the annual basis.
Yes, sir. And the next slide, I just wanted to give a brief update on the camp cleanups that our tactical patrol force has been doing. As you know, they work with the streets division and also Caltrans to go around the city at different locations and clean up abandoned property at homeless camps. We have a P3 goal of completing about 16 of these camp cleanups for fiscal year 16. We've just passed the half-year mark for fiscal year 16, and we've conducted 14 of these camp cleanups since July 1st. We're well ahead of that goal. We continue to pretty, be pretty aggressive and active on that. It's, it's a pretty big eyesore and health and safety concern. And I just wanted to add a couple photos in there of the most recent one, which we did on January 11th down there at the labor line at 400 East Tiananrally Street. Obviously, the picture on the left is the before picture, and then afterwards, after the, the cleanup crew went in and cleaned everything up. So just wanted to share that with you and make sure that you know that we continue to do those, and we know you appreciate them. That's the patrol division update.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, welcome, and it's nice to meet you, Mr. Dominguez. Welcome aboard. Alex Altavilla, the investigative division captain with the Santa Barbara Police Department. I wanted to go ahead and highlight a few investigations, trials and convictions that we've had in the investigative division, talk a little bit about my aggressive caseload assignment policy, and then also talk to you a little bit some of the challenges that we have been having in our division as a result of some of the staffing challenges department-wide. After a month-long investigation of a narcotics unit, they went ahead and arrested Jose Manuel Herrera, age 37, and Jose Luis Gomez, age 50, from Jackson, California. And they arrested them with 10 pounds of methamphetamine, which was valued at about $55,000 here in Santa Barbara. According to our Comstat data, methamphetamine continues to be the drug of choice. It has definitely been trending up over the last several years, and a lot of it just comes down to economics. The, the, the cost is, continues to go ahead and drop dramat, dramatically. The Kelly Hunt gang murder trial is currently ongoing. We are now handling the third month of testimony. It was the homicide that happened in, over by Santa Barbara High School. And right now, the prosecution has rested with their case and the, the defense currently is proceeding. We actually ended up having a very good conviction with Andrew Balderez, who pled guilty to second-degree murder of Baltimore Liel that took place in 2009. He also admitted that the murder was done at the benefit of a criminal street gang, and if you recall, Liel died from multiple stab wounds as a result of the incident. As you can see from our chart here as far as assigned cases, the investigation, investigative division continues to see an increase in assigned cases. One of the things that I have my sergeants do is be very aggressive when it comes to caseload assignment because that is our customer service aspect of things as far as following up on cases from the patrol division. And you can see over the last several years, we've definitely had a rise of approximately 14% in, in assigned cases. The investigative, investigative division also has had some challenges when it comes to staffing. We are currently holding four detective positions vacant, that we're doing so to go ahead and assist patrol with patrol team staffing. And we also do not have a narcotics detective assigned to the Saber Net Task Force. So we're going back to doing narcotics enforcement like we did back when I used to actually do police work, is that we're basically sharing resources with Saber Cat and the Sheriff's Department countywide to go ahead and combat the drug problem. In November, we had our lab technician go ahead and retire, and we are currently working with the Sheriff's Department to, to process evidence. And it, it goes a long ways to have the good relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Department because we realize that when it comes down to any type of crime, there are definitely no boundaries when it comes to the county or the city. So I really appreciate them helping us out. And we currently have two lab technician candidates in background for that position. And then I also have one sergeant that's temporarily assigned to patrol, and I have two detectives that are out injured and one detective that is on modified duty. So that rounds out the investigative division.
Hart?
Can you tell me how, what is the total number that you want to, what you should have versus how many folks are out? Because that, that is one thing, I must say, that in this presentation, it's really hard to track that globally. You know, and we're doing this division by division, and I think I got a handle on the patrol division, but now it sounds like some of your people are backfilling in patrol. So let, let me understand where you're, how many you're short.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, if you want to go ahead and speak, well, speak specifically of detectives, my, my full staffing would be 18 detectives, and I currently have 14. I also do not have somebody in the crime lab. So again, we're working in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department, and some of my crimes against persons detectives are taking on lab responsibilities. And then I also have two officers that are on IOD that aren't here at work, and then one detective that's on modified duty.
So that, does that mean you should have 18, but you really have 11?
As far as people showing up to work, I actually have 12, because I do have one back on modified duty. So I should have 18, actually have, actually have 12 that are showing up and available for follow-up investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Frank Mannix, Deputy Police Chief. Councilmember Hart, perhaps there's something I can, a little bit of information that I can give you that will help clarify that patrol staffing and how we backfill our vacancies? Patrol staffing fluctuates between 45 and 50 officers that are assigned to our patrol team strength. We're seldom below 45, and we're occasionally above 50. And what happens is, as we become above 50 in our strength, that is when we pull from patrol strength and start backfilling our vacancies. So when you say, when are we going to do this, it's as we start assigning people to patrol team strength that bring us above that 50 level. For example, when we get our recruits off our field training and they're released on their own, they then count as full-fledged patrol officers. We'll go in one fell swoop, we could go from 45 to 50 with the addition of five releases all at one time, and then we may start pulling from team strength and backfilling our specialty units. That's typically how that works. Moving on to our crime statistics, what's interesting about performing our update at the end of the year like this is we see that we have a full year of, of 2015 that we can now discuss and analyze the crime trends. And when we look at the category of violent crime, what we have seen in 2015 is a 20% increase over 2014. So 2015 was a higher year for us. It was about 10% higher than the average of the past five years. So normally, we run with 410 violent crimes. Last year, we logged 454, so about a, a 10% above average. But it is kind of disturbing to see that mustard-colored graph line there to be about 20% higher than it was last year. As we look at some of the reasons why, we see primarily the category of violent crime rises and falls with the, really the crime of aggravated assault, which is that purple line at the top there. You can see that the vast majority of, of the violent crimes that occur are in that area. Last year, we had 322 violent crimes compared to a five-year average of 288, which represents about a 12% increase in that area. The aggravated assaults, just to remind everyone what types of crimes we're talking about, assault with a deadly weapon, felony battery, brandishing of a weapon, domestic assaults, murder, of course, which we have very few of, elder abuse, and then felony resisting arrest. So when someone violently resists arrest in the field against a police officer, that gets counted as a violent crime.
Can I, since we're on this topic, there's been quite a lot coming out of Santa Maria lately, I think 13 homicides in the last 12 to 13 months, so dramatically different than here, but I'm wondering if you're seeing any residual effect, or is it localized there? Or maybe just comment on that? It just seems to be, and I know the community there is starting to really talk a lot about public safety in Santa Maria and maybe address that a little bit.
It's interesting you should bring up that value on 13 because I remember as a patrol officer in the early 90s, we had 13 homicides in a, a 12-month window. As a matter of fact, we were tied for Oxnard at that time in Santa Barbara. So for us to be down to one or two homicides a year is, is really dramatically lower than where we were 20 years ago. Santa Maria is a different town than Santa Barbara, and we are lucky that generally speaking, we have a, a very low homicide rate, and that is one category of crime. That's the one category of crime that I feel comfortable comparing jurisdiction to jurisdiction because it's tough to under-report a homicide. But when we compare crime stats and crime trends to city by city, we have to be very careful because every city has its own way of categorizing the arrests that they make. But yeah, Santa Maria definitely has some challenges with homicides. We've talked to the police chief up there, and he's a very busy man.
I guess my, my question is, are you seeing, is it, is it the issue, are the issues there that are resulting in, in that rate of homicide in Santa Maria, something you think that's localized there? Or are you, I mean, just in terms of your investigative division or others, are there, is there a link throughout the county? I mean, it doesn't appear to be since the rate's low, but, you know, I just want to get a sense of that. It's, it's not that far away, and, you know, it's in one county, and so.
Right. They, they have a much different gang problem in Santa Maria than we, we have here in Santa Barbara. They have a much more well-established generational gangster, which means grandpa was a gangster, dad was a gangster, I'm a gangster. They tend to see more of that type of activity in Santa Barbara than we have seen in, I mean, in Santa Maria than we're seeing in Santa Barbara. We've been very successful in knocking down our gang-related and gang incident crime over the last several years through some really innovative investigative techniques. Captain Altavilla rolled out a, a great investigation that wrapped up the Kelly Hunt homicide. And when you arrest your gangsters for the homicides they commit, the message gets out, you can't get away with murder in Santa Barbara, and that's the key. You've got to put your resources so that you can make those arrests. And then, as a matter of fact, I had a gangster tell me that one time. Everybody knows you can't get away with murder in Santa Barbara, and this was a man we arrested for murder. So it, it, it's something we're very proud of, that we have a low homicide rate, and we continue to knock off old homicides. It wasn't that long ago that we made a great arrest and got a final disposition on a homicide from the 1997, so it was good to put that one to rest.
Chief, did you want to add something?
Well, you know, Santa Maria's a great city, and, and their chief and I are friends. You know, he's pulling his hair out. The community is very upset. They have great programs there for youth. They, they have programs like we do, and many times it's just bad luck. And, and it, and some of the homicides in Santa Maria in the last few months have been domestic violence homicides, so they have not been gang homicides solely. There have been some. They had three murders within four hours yesterday. They're, they're very busy. This is just something that is just going back and forth between gangs. But again, in between, they've had quite a few domestic violence homicides as well. And the community is up in arms, but not up in arms against the seat of the police department. They're just upset that these, these folks are, are committing these violent crimes. So it, it can happen anywhere. We have not seen the residual of that here in Santa Barbara, but we do keep tabs with each other. We talk monthly, at least monthly, with all the chiefs and talk about different things. We do help each other out covertly on some of their issues and some of our issues, but no connection to us yet, and hopefully that won't be the case. But we're, we're working very, very closely. Captain Altavilla has a great relationship with all the other cities in terms of gang investigations, people that they're looking for that me, we may be looking for. So this is a continual effort countywide, including with the sheriff, to, to bring this down. But right now, Santa Maria's in, they're in the barrel right now, and they're really, really taking an awful hit, and the community is just up in arms. But these are individuals who, number one, are not going to go to programs, who are not going to go to City Hall and ask how they could change their life. These are not individuals who are going to participate in PAL. These are individuals who have made a clear, conscious choice to commit violent crime against another human being. And right now, Santa Maria is just taking a huge hit, as we did in the past, and they didn't. But we're keeping an eye on what's going on countywide along with the Sheriff's Department.
Great, thank you for that. Okay.
Excuse me, go. In the category of aggravated assaults, we see, our five-year average is 25 per month. So anytime that we see, or 24 per month, anytime that we see this purple line go above the 25 level, you can tell that we're above average. And the good news is, is we look towards the last four months of last year, really the quarter that we're reporting on, we see that we've been at average for three of the last four months. So even though serious, or aggravated assaults for the year was well above average, for the last four months, they've really pulled down to be just about at average rates, at 25, 25, 34, and 26. So we're hoping that trend at least will continue. In the area of property crime, we've seen a 20% increase. And if we look at this value right here, this graph is kind of encouraging. We see that property crime has been dropping significantly since 2012, last year being the lowest year that we have out of any of the seven years we're recording. But the change from 2014 to 2015 is a 20% increase. Having said all that, we should recognize that 2015 is still the second-lowest property crime that we've seen in the last seven years. So while it's not, we don't like the fact that this trend has reversed itself a little bit, we, we, we do have to recognize that it is still a pretty good year overall. When we look at, thanks, go. When we look at some of the crimes in particular that seem to be above average, for the last three months, we've seen this rather significant rise in burglary theft from vehicle. So this is any theft that occurs from a car, whether it's a break-in or simply an unlocked vehicle where someone has left valuable property in the car and a thief has come and taken it. We've seen a significant increase because 38 is our five-year average per month, and we're seeing totals of 61, 49, 52. So in the last several months, it's really come, come up much higher than we'd like to see. However, some of the other crimes are significantly abo, below average. If we look in the area of residential burglaries, which is obviously a very invasive crime, if someone who's been a victim of a residential burglary, it's really an offense to them as a person, not only their property. But typically, we're seeing 21 per month, and for the last several months, we've been well below that. So we, we did have a little bloom in August, we've made a number of arrests, and now we've seen that drop right back down. But it's the burglary theft from vehicles that seem to be challenging for us right now.
In both those categories, Deputy Chief, are those daytime crimes?
They could be. Typically, residential burglaries are done during the day because that's when people aren't at their homes.
Right.
They're away from their homes and, and at work. And typically, car burglaries occur at night because people park their car at night and go into their homes. But there's always exceptions. Sometimes burglaries happen at night, they're frequently referred to as a hot prow, where someone is breaking into a home that's occupied, and people call and say, I can hear someone in my house right now. That can happen at night.
Yeah, and wasn't there a crew that was down here boosting up those, those car burglaries? There was a, at least that's where I, I think I read that somewhere.
That's correct, and we feel there are multiple... That's correct, and we feel there are multiple sources of suspects who are committing these types of crime.
Out of towners, am I...
Some are out of towners and some are local.
Okay, thank you.
In this last category of basically petty thefts and other low-level thefts, you can see it kind of represents a sawtooth. Some months are up, some months are below. If we look as an aggregate of the last 12 months, we see an average of 130 a month. So 130 a month is almost exactly our five-year average, so I think it's safe to say that we're currently experiencing an average level of crime with respect to that level.
That's our presentation, and we'll take more questions if you have any.
Great, we do have one public comment speaker, Courtney, why don't you come on up?
A friend of mine went to jail and was in jail on New Year's Eve. She told me that the police officers that were in the jail had ordered pornography and were watching it from 10:00 PM and all night long. If this is going on, I think that all of those officers that were present that night should be suspended without notice until they are told that that's not acceptable on duty. I don't know if it's true because I was not in jail with her. However, it's been proven that people that, you know, I don't care if officers are doing it on their off time because it's not people's business. Officers are people too. However, it's been proven that people with simulatable energies might go out and rape a citizen. And I had an experience that I will not call a rape out of respect for the fact that I put myself in the situation, but the man obviously has anger management issues toward women. I don't know if he's an undercover cop. I suspect that he might be an attorney, and I don't want to embarrass the family, but I know a lot about the media because of my family's background. My great-grandfather created Terry Tunes, Heckle and Jekyll, Mighty Mouse, and all of those characters. So he's very old in the industry, and he just has anger management issues and shouldn't be allowed to deal with women on a sexual basis, I don't think. So if that pornography is going on, I'm horrified, and I wish I could call for some sort of investigation into this to see if this is going on on any other night other than New Year's Eve. I was in jail for two days, and I still don't know the reason why I was in jail. I don't know whether it was detainment. I don't know whether it was precursor to a more formal charge, which it may be unfortunately because of my situation. I'm trying to avoid that with my knowledge, and I don't know if it's because nice people of this community who know that I really wanted to be an attorney before my financial problems started and the stress in my life started were just trying to train me to be strong because some of the clients can't get out of jail, so the attorneys have to go into jail. I still don't know the reason I was in there, but when I was in there, that was not going on.
Thank you.
But I hope they will investigate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's back to the council. Ms. Murillo.
Thank you. We, our ordinance committee was talking about the new noise ordinance, and maybe this is an unfair question because we just are putting it forward, but one of the residents who live near the city college wanted me to ask, you know, how quickly could the SNAP or the enforcement of the noise ordinance be in place? So just passing on that question, please.
Once the ordinance is in place, if someone were to make a noise complaint, it would be handled just as we would any other complaint. It would be logged by dispatch, and then it would be dispatched as our officers were available in the field. So it could be a matter of minutes or it could be an hour.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Hotchkiss?
I don't really have a question, but I wanted to take the opportunity, since I think it's the last chance that we're going to have this, to thank you for your 14 years here and wish you well, and I trust you'll remain a Santa Barbaraan.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor. Surprised me with that one. It's been an honor to be here. It's been a great joy. We're not going anywhere. Where else are you going to go? That's better than Santa Barbara. I'm very proud to be a part of this city. I appreciate all of your support and even the debates that we've had over the years. When I was 10 years old, I sat in a police car for the first time, front seat, though, front seat. And when I was 10 years old, I decided this is what I wanted to do. And when you get to do your dream job and end with a great city like this and great bosses, I'm very appreciative, very blessed, and I'm going to miss everybody. Thank you.
Well, I have a special relationship, I'd have to say. When I got bucked off that horse, he and Chief Mannix, Deputy Chief Mannix showed up, I got great attention after that, I'll tell you. And then when he got a tire through the window, I was one of the early guys to come up and see. He didn't look so good then. You look a lot better now. Anyway, once again, thanks very much.
And your last day is February 19th, so a couple more weeks with you, and obviously you'll still be here in Santa Barbara, but want to take this opportunity that this is your last update to us in the council to thank you for your longtime service and for your leadership, and particularly for me personally. Two items, one, working with kids in at-risk situations and helping them steer them into healthy and more productive activities in their lives, and then also the restorative policing program. We have departments from all over the state, in fact, outside the state, come here to learn how we're doing things, and that's due to your vision and leadership, and I really want to commend you for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Appreciate it. My pleasure.
Any other questions? Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number 16.
Advisory groups, updates, and council liaisons.
Okay, so really, the easiest way to go through this is perhaps just go through the list, and obviously with Councilmember Francisco not here, there are a number of vacancies. What I will do is ask those who are currently in the position they're in if they'd like to remain there, and if not, then see where they can be filled. And if there's multiple people who want to do that, we can figure out what to do. We do try to honor seniority on council if we can, but we'll see how this goes. So I'm just going to run through the list and see where we end up. So we'll start with the advisory group, council liaisons, the airport commission, Mr. Hotchkiss.
I'd like to remain. Thank you.
Okay. So architectural board of review, Mr. Francisco's now that's vacant. Mr. Hotchkiss, you're the alternate, I don't know if that was, or if there's others who are interested.
I could do that or I'm open to a replacement if somebody has a particular interest.
All right. And for Mr. Dominguez's information here, you're not expected to attend every meeting. You are just sort of the point person on any of these items should something come up and they want to bring a council member in just for advice or, you know, connection. So, because the ABR and the planning commission, that could take up a lot of time. So to thank, so all the commissioners who do that work. But that's the point of the liaisons here, to be that connecting piece. So unless anyone's interested, Mr. Hotchkiss, then for ABR? All right, you're it, Mr. Hotchkiss. Also, arts advisory committee. Mr. Hotchkiss, you're listed there as well, if you wanted to...
Yeah, I'll stick with it. Thanks.
Okay. Building and fire code board of appeals, Ms. Murillo.
I'll keep it, please.
Okay. Civil service commissioners, Mr. White.
Glad to keep it.
Okay. Community development and human services committee, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Again, this is a time-consuming obligation, so if somebody feels they can devote time to it, I would yield.
Okay. Anyone interested in this one?
Can I ask for a clarification?
Sure.
So for the ABR, is Frank stepping up out of the alternate?
Yes, because I didn't hear any peeps otherwise.
So if you aren't necessarily committed to staying there, I'd be glad to step in for you.
Be the alternate?
The community development and human services?
I would appreciate that.
Sure. So make...
Thank you, sir.
Right. And where it says alternate, it's nice when, if it's requested, it's not required at all. So we don't need an alternate for ABR, for example. Okay. We are up to community events and festivals, Ms. Murillo.
Keep it, please.
Okay. Creeks advisory committee, Mr. Hart.
I'll keep it, please.
All right. And downtown parking committee, Mr. Rouse.
I'll keep that, please.
All right. Fire and, fire police commissioners?
Yes, I'll keep that as well.
Okay, Ms. Murillo, fire police pension commissioner?
Keep it.
The harbor commission, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Please.
Okay. All right, so historic landmarks commission, that is open. We have a member of the commission here, so don't all, you know. Yeah, great. Okay, Mr. Dominguez, great. Thank you. Housing authority commission, Ms. Murillo.
Keep it, please.
Okay. Library board as well?
Keep it.
Okay. Living wage advisory committee?
Keep it.
So we have now neighborhood advisory council with Mr. Hart and Mr. White. Mr. White, did you want to...
Yes, Madam Mayor, I already jumped in with both feet on the various regional, on the three regional water representations, and that is, it's taking a lot of time, and that's, and the one place where I think that I'd like to step back is the neighborhood advisory.
Okay. Mr. Hart, did you want to stay on or...
Actually, I think it might be more appropriate for the folks who, now that we have council districts, for the council members that represent those neighborhoods to serve as liaisons. This is an interestingly geographically specific advisory committee, and so I don't know that I'm the right person.
So that would make it then Ms. Murillo and Mr. Dominguez, if that makes...
If that's okay with them, it makes more sense to me than...
I agree, and Mr. Alvarado with neighborhood services had brought that up wisely, and I agree to go back to the neighborhood advisory council, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez, would that be something you'd be interested in?
Yes, I'm happy to serve there.
Great. Thank you. All right, so it will be Murillo and Dominguez. Parks and recreation commission, Ms. Murillo.
I'm willing to give that one up.
Okay. Is anyone interested in Parks and Rec?
I'm interested in that.
All right, Mr. Hart. Mr. White, planning commission.
I'm glad to stay, unless someone has a burning desire.
Hearing crickets, so it's you, so there we go. Rental housing mediation board, Ms. Murillo.
I love that assignment. Thank you.
Oh, well, then, there we go. I'd like to stay on as the sister cities board liaison. The youth council, Ms. Murillo.
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, single-family design board, that is now vacant. Ms. Murillo, you are listed as an alternate. Did you want to move up or...
No, because I have my sights on other things.
Okay, well then, so now this is a, this is a vacancy then for single-family design board. Great. All right. It's actually, makes a lot of sense to have someone with the different design review boards stay consistent. Okay, this next item actually should go on the next page. It's not a appointment. It's a, I think, right, the Southern California Edison is, that is being recommended as a new council subcommittee?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's two new council subcommittees that we're recommending. This one is Southern California Edison, the other will be Community Choice Energy. The Southern California Edison, we think, would deal with Edison-specific issues like the downtown reliability project and some of the other items that we've discussed with them when they were here. And then the other one is focused on the Community Choice Energy, which we're partnering with the county and other regional agencies to look at the viability of Community Choice Energy.
Okay, we'll get to Community Choice Energy when we get to it on the page. I would be interested, I think we can do up to three of the Edison one. I'd like to be a part of that one, and I didn't know of others. Mr. Rouse?
I would volunteer.
Okay.
And I would too, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So it'll be Schneider, Rouse, and White. Okay.
What, what did you guys just claim, the Edison?
Well, they were, I heard interest from Mr. Rouse and Mr. White and myself. Yeah, for the Edison one.
I'm interested in the other one, the Community Choice Energy. Okay, okay, okay.
Well, no, I hear, I hear you. Good. Transportation circulation committee, Ms. Murillo.
We've been tag-teaming that, but if Mr. Dominguez, Councilmember Dominguez, has an interest in that, it meets on Thursday nights, maybe quarterly. It's not a monthly meeting, if I'm correct.
So are you giving up your seat or Mr. Hart's seat for Mr. Hart?
We've been tag-teaming, yeah, we've been confused.
I'd be happy to step up. That's fine with me, too.
So we're both, okay. So Mr., so we'll take off Murillo and Hart, and we'll put in Dominguez. How's that? Okay. Okay. Water commission, Mr. White.
I'm glad to keep that.
Keep that, makes sense. Okay. All right, so on to the next page. All right, the committee on district elections, do we need that anymore? Can we just say bye-bye? Okay, so we can cross that out. We've been there, done that. Okay. Committee on legislation, Mr. Hotchkiss and White, you're currently serving on that, and we have a vacancy. So, Mr. Hotchkiss and White, are you still interested or...
I'd like to keep it.
Okay. Mr. White, and then...
I'm interested in that.
Okay, so we'll add Mr. Hart to that one. Commuter rail exploration, we haven't met in forever, but given there are changes happening with LoSan, I'd like to stay on that, being that I'm also the alternate to LoSan from SB CAG. Mr. White, you're listed there if you're, if you wanted to stay on or not.
Yeah.
And then we do have, we do have an opening. I don't know, Mr. Hart, if that makes sense or if that's a...
I don't think I need to participate on the committee.
Okay. You deal with enough commuter rail stuff in your other hat. Anyone else on, Ms. Murillo?
Yeah, I'd like it.
Okay. And Mr. Kalan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't realize we had a commuter rail exploration committee, or I would have asked staff sooner. Is that an ad hoc committee?
I guess it is, so, yeah. I mean, it's not anything that meets regularly.
One of the hallmarks of an ad hoc committee under the Brown Act is that it has a fixed lifespan. So I would be concerned if that's been around for a number of years, that it may be time for us to transition it into a standing committee that would comply with the Brown Act. The other point I wanted to make before you get to the rest of the ad hoc committees is that I, as you know, I serve on the League of California Cities Brown Act Committee, and we've recently been pondering the problem of changing council members on head-hoc committees. The question is, does that mean a quorum has been involved if you add a new member? So I'd ask you to take that into consideration as you're making appointments to the ad hoc committees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I guess one question is, do we need a commuter rail exploration committee at this point? I mean, I think the major part was when Amtrak was being run under Caltrans Division of Rail, that's now changed through state law. I don't even know if it's even necessary.
Good point. Long past the exploring state.
Anymore, so, you know, I'm all for getting rid of meetings if we don't have to meet. So if it's okay on consensus-wise, we can just cross that one out? Okay. I think so. All right. And if we need to talk about commuter rail, we can always talk about commuter rail. Okay. Finance committee, we already figured out. So, all right, now, infrastructure committee, I'm understanding there's some recommendations that may come to the future on some, we heard this morning during public comment and about water mains and others, and is that coming to finance committee soon, just the conversation? Mr. Casey?
You know, Madam Mayor, we were thinking of bringing to the full council a discussion, especially on the streets fund and the financial challenges of the streets fund, and recommend that council either create a subcommittee or refer the matter to the finance committee to delve into at least the street funding issue, which is a major portion of your infrastructure. But infrastructure also includes parks and recreation facilities and the police building as well. So it's up to council.
I guess my suggestion would be, this was put together, this subcommittee, because we were looking at going out into the community and doing this whole process for a potential item on a future ballot, and that may still happen, but maybe wait until we get the presentation and see if we want to continue with the subcommittee. But then we get into this Brown Act issue. Is that what we're, is that what you're about to say, Mr. Kalan?
Well, you added, Mayor, that the prospect of a ballot measure may still be out there. I would caution you not to convert a subcommittee from one purpose to another.
Okay.
That is another hallmark of a standing committee.
Tricky.
Madam Mayor?[1714.65]
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Another option, as I think Mr. Casey mentioned, is perhaps the Finance Committee could look at this as well, too. So that's another option. We can talk about this when we come back with the full presentation about the Streets.
Right, so, why don't we do this? Why don't, in case we want to bring up an issue related to a ballot measure, which was what the Infrastructure Subcommittee was about, just for now, we could keep this as is, but let's also have the conversation when it comes back, and if there's financing issues, that makes sense, probably the Finance Committee. Right? So we'll just keep it, that's just a long way of saying to Deborah, we're keeping it the three members. Okay. All right. Mayor Pro Tem, we've figured out already. The new zoning ordinances, councilmembers Mario and White? You're working on that still, right?
Still working on it, thank you.
And then Ordnance Committee, we've figured out, and then Sign Ordnance Review Committee, is that still necessary? That was something, Mr. Kalan, you were, we were working on, right? That's still in action?
Yeah, we're actually coming back to the council to formalize the non-council member appointments in February.
Okay, so that's Mr. Hart and Mr. Hotchkiss. Okay. And then finally, the Sustainability Council Committee, myself, Mr. White, and Mr. Rouse. I'm still interested in that, and I'm seeing nods from Mr. Rouse. Mr. White, yes or no?
I would, I would cede that spot if there's somebody else who has a burning desire, but I'm also willing to stay on.
Okay.
I'm interested, depending on how often it meets.
Monthly, pretty much?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Welcome to sustainability, Ms. Mario. Okay. All right, so then other city-related, city-related agencies, these are outside agencies. Again, it's staying connected to them. The Coast Village, Coast Village Road Business Association, that is now open.
I'd, I'll offer to do that if somebody else doesn't want to.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
I was also sent an email by them asking if I wanted to work with them, so I'm not sure.
Perhaps then it would be better for Mr. Dominguez.
Because he was, he was invited in? Okay, well, Mr. Dominguez, that's fine, either way. It's in district, it's in, it's next to, you're adjacent to the district, right? Yeah. Well, Mr. Dominguez, that's fine. That's, okay. So Downtown Organization, we should probably call it Downtown Santa Barbara, since they've changed their name, so we can put that on there. That is now also open.
I'm happy to do it.
And I attend those meetings as well.
And you're, right. So, Mr. Hart, you want to?
Sure.
Okay. Why don't we move Mr. Hart? And then now also, we need to change the name, as we heard last week, the, so much better, the Greater Santa Barbara Lodging and Restaurant Association, to Hospitality Santa Barbara. So that position is now open. Mr. Rouse, you're the alternate there, and I know if you want to become the... All right. We'll do that. All right. Looking Good Santa Barbara Committee, Ms. Mario?
Keep it, please.
Okay. And then the Milpus Action Task Force, with Ms. Mario and Mr. Hotchkiss?
Keep it, please.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I think both Ms. Mario and I both want to continue there, but it would be more appropriate if it was Mr. Dominguez, because it's his turf. So rather than have three of us on there, which is a little bit heavyweight, maybe Ms. Mario and I should cede that to him.
Well, you can still have two. So, did you want to cede that to Mr. Dominguez, then, or?
No, I'm saying, no, I'd like to stay there, too, but if we can't have three, we ought to have one.
Right. When we were both appointed, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that the thought was that there was one person who was sort of more sympathetic to the homeless shelter, and generally more sympathetic to the Milpus Community Association, which are the two different entities. And so we fulfill those roles, and...
I don't recall that, but I'm not sure that was the, what was, we were trying to do, just to do what's best for Milpus. You are in an inordinate number of liaisons, and have not been able to attend, and so, I leave this up to the council, that we want three or one.
I won't give it up. Thank you.
Guess we got three, then.
Well, three are allowed to attend, so if you want to add three, you could.
Okay, we'll do that.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. And then Presidio Joint Powers Committee. I asked last, I think Mr. Francisco said it hasn't met in a gazillion years, right? So Mr. Rouse will do it? I mean, do we need this on, on the list?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
When I've spoken to Mr. Jackman in the past, he always says that he wants a liaison.
Okay. Well, Mr. Rouse, guess what? Careful what you wish for. All right, well, watch, watch, they meet like every week now. Santa Barbara Beautiful, Mr. White, your name's listed there. Keep that? Okay. I'd like to stay on as Santa Barbara Center for the Performing Arts. Visit Santa Barbara, Mr. Hart.
I'll stay. Thank you.
All right. That's all of those, and one last, up to last. So now we're up to council representation on regional agencies. Beacon, Mr. Hart.
I'll stay with that, please.
Okay. All right, so I think we went through, the next to Combe, which is the, or CCRB and Combe. Mr. White, you are currently those, correct? And so CCRB is yourself, and we, I think we made Ms. Mario alternate, right? That we already?
Thank you.
We already made that determination before. And same, and Combe is Mr. White as well, right?
Right.
Okay. So that's taken care of. Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, I'd like to stay on. Mr. Francisco is obviously, there's a vacancy there. We have Ms. Mario and Mr. Hotchkiss as alternates, which are not necessary, but we can move one or both, you know, one over.
I would like to move into the position, ma'am. I looked at the schedule, it works with my schedule.
It's fine, I relinquish.
Okay. Why don't we just list it just as myself and you, as the two members? And obviously, others are welcome to attend the meetings, but I don't think we need a, it's hard for noticing on their end to have these alternates, I think, for that committee, so. Central Coast Water Authority, I think also Mr. White, right? You were, you've taken that position there. And does that need an alternate?
Well, I'm planning on attending, so I can tell you, I'm up to my eyeballs in it and plan on staying.
Yes, no, I know that, but does CCWA need to know who an alternate is?
I would like to. It fits with the Combe alternate position.
Okay, why don't, why don't we check actually on all three of those to make, because there are other board, there's, there's rules, like SB CAG and APCD, they ask for an alternate, and if that's the case, then that's fine. I just want to make sure if it's legit, because it's a Brown Act Committee, and there's closed sessions, and I just want to make sure that that's, fits within their structure. Okay. Where are we? We are...
Affordable Housing.
City County Affordable Housing Task Group, Mr. Hart and Ms. Mario.
I'll keep it, I'm the vice chair.
Great. Mr. Hart?
Sure.
Okay. City County Solid Waste Task Group, I think, given what we heard from Mr. Kalan on committees, this might be another one of myself, White, and alternate on, with Rouse. Well, I'm still interested, this, especially with Tahiga's coming up.
I am, too.
Okay. All right. Mr. White, you were my alternate at SB CAG, and I believe I heard I'm still, that was appointed still as the Coastal Rail Coordinating Council?
Right.
Member, so that stays?
Yep.
Okay. And Community Action Commission, Ms. Mario?
I'd be willing to give that one up.
Okay. Is anyone interested in that? And you go to the board meetings.
Once a month in Beulton, they distribute federal anti-poverty dollars. It's very satisfying.
Any interest there?
I'll keep it, then, if no one wants it.
Okay.
It's great.
Okay. All right, here we go. Community Choice Energy. So, this would be a new committee, we can have up to three members. I heard, Ms. Mario, you are volunteering for quite a bit, but you mentioned interest. Any other?
I am interested in this as well.
As am I.
Okay. So I'm hearing Mario, Hart, and White?
For the record, I'm interested, just so it doesn't seem like I'm shirking work up here.
No, no, you don't, you got so much catching up to do, don't you worry.
Yeah, maybe you are, and you've got your hands full.
Yeah. The LoSan, I was appointed again as alternate to the LoSan Board through SB CAG, so I'll keep that, and still want to keep on as SB CAG Director at APCD with Mr. White. Are you still interested as the alternate, correct?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then the MTD Board, Mr. Hart, or Ms. Mario, and Mr. Hart was an alternate. That, keep that?
Right.
Okay. All right, and then there's the Solid Waste Ad hoc Committee, which I thought we had, right? Wasn't that? Oh, that was for some, so that, so this is, now, this is for, Mr. Casey had this on here, do you want to describe?
I believe this was more if we wanted to check in with the Subcommittee on the Resource Recovery Project.
Okay. So it would make sense if Mr. White and not, well, maybe it should be the same three people as the City County Solid Waste Task Group. Isn't that what, yeah, that would make, because that's, all right. And then the South Coast Task Force Leadership Council, I'd like to stay on that. Ms. Mario, I know you've been attending most of the meetings.
I attend them all. I'd love to move into that position officially. Thank you.
Okay. And that meeting, actually, Mr. Dominguez as well, just not to say we're ignoring you, it's welcome, it's open to the public, and people go, and that's how Ms. Mario kept going.
And it's going from quarterly to less frequent.
Yeah. It may. Yeah. And then the final one, I'm actually on the Board of the League of California Cities now, because that's how they rotate for past presidents, so we can correct that, and I'm also still co-chair of the US Conference Mayor's Hunger and Homelessness Task Force. Is there anyone else on a League of Cities, or Committee, or National League of Cities? I encourage you to get involved. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
The Arts, not, the Access Advisory Committee?
Oh, thank you for mentioning that.
And I was attending those meetings, but I think my plate is full. That's a very satisfying group, too.
So there was a request from a member of the Access Advisory Committee to have a liaison there, and there's nothing wrong with adding that if we wish, if someone would like to do it, of course, and the committee can come to any one of us as well, but if that's something... This is, this is about public works projects and others in terms of access, universal access issues, as it relates to our budget, and I know there's usually a section in our budget for...
Accessibility. And it meets quarterly on a Friday morning. It's very convenient. I mean, I think...
Would you like to try that one, Mr. Dominguez? All right, we're going to add you on, so if we could add that on the first page there, that would be great. Any other questions, or? Okay, so why don't...
Is there an alternate needed for the Youth Council?
We could, we could do that, if you want to add yourself as an alternate.
I don't.
No? No, you don't? Okay. It's not, wasn't required, but, okay. Any other questions? All right, if we could have a motion to make those changes as...
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Hotchkiss, seconded by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good. All right, that was a lot of housekeeping. Thank you for your patience about that. Yes, we're going to take a five council-minute break, and we'll come back with the appeal. Thanks. I'd like to call the City Council meeting back to order, if you can read item number 17.
Appeal of Historic Landmarks Commission, listing of building located at 29 through 37 East Victoria Street on the potential historical resource list.
Okay, this is an appeal, so what we will do, I will first ask my colleagues if they had any ex parte communications, and we'll go then to a staff presentation. I see Ms. Murray here from Historic Landmarks Commission, she can speak after the staff presentation. Then it goes to the appellant, and you have up to 20 minutes to give your presentation. You don't need to use the entire 20 minutes, but any time left over could be saved till after the public comment period, same with the applicant, for 20 minutes. Then there's public comment. If there's any time left over for either side, if you'd like to use that up at that point, you can. And then it's to the council, and at that point, it's staged up at the dais unless we need to ask anyone any questions at that point. So, with that, any ex parte communications, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I was seeing Mr. Chenoweth on another real estate matter, and then he mentioned that it had something to do with this, and it hadn't occurred to me right away that that was about to appear before the council. I said, "Okay, we got to stop." And we stopped talking about that and continued, so that's the extent of the...
Okay. I just don't know if you needed to identify who you were talking to, or did it matter? Or just talking to somebody?
Mike Chenoweth is part of, one of the owners of the building in question.
If you obtained any information that was substantive, you should disclose what that information was, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Just his ownership.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I'm sorry, just out of abundance of caution, Mr. Chenoweth, you said it is? He's not a source of income to you, is he?
No.
Okay, fine.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also ran into Mr. Chenoweth at a party, and he mentioned that the, that this building was going to be on, on the appeal. I also said I wished to hear no further about it, and that was the extent of the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been contacted more than, on more than one occasion, by Mr. Fertiledi's attorney, Michael Falver, regarding the Virginia Reiling and this appeal.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. No. So, Mr. Lamont?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. On November 16th, 2015, appeal was filing, filed by Virginia Reiling, who lives adjacent to the subject property under appeal. The appellant asserted that the city did not follow the processing steps outlined in the Santa Barbara municipal code for listing the property on city's potential historic resource list. What's a little unusual about this appeal is that we don't really have a project that's being appealed. It's just a miscellaneous action on the behalf of the Historic Landmarks Commission. The site location is at the corner of East Victoria and Ana Capa Street. It's a one-story building, and currently housing the Codario Restaurant. Before I go further, I wanted to just give you a brief outline of what the list of potential historic resources is. It's essentially an inventory that the city has to identify and list the city's resources that appear eligible for possible designation as a structure of merit or city landmark. It is not a designation list, unlike the structure of merit or historic city landmark designation list. This potential list is a result of previous survey efforts on the behalf of the city, and is updated periodically to keep it current. is updated periodically to keep it current. The appellant's issues are centered on the process, whether the process was followed per the Historic Structures Ordinance and the administrative guidelines that were adopted as part of the demolition review ordinance in 2004. The appellant asserts that there is no staff authority to recommend updates to the potential list, and furthermore, in subsequent communications with the Historic Landmarks Commission, they have asserted that the building should be designated as structure of merit by the Historic Landmarks Commission, which is not to this point. This is the building as viewed from the corner, very familiar in the city. And here is the Victoria Street view of the building. Here's the Anacapa. This has an outdoor dining location. A brief outline of what's being appealed, or the history of the project. This listing actually occurred in August of last year. Unanimous vote that was held by the Historic Landmarks Commission. A staff evaluation was presented to the commission, and at that time, Ms. Reiling pointed out that there should have been a consultation with the historic designation subcommittee as recommended in our procedural document. Rather than argue that point, our city attorney advised that we should just return back to the Historic Landmarks Commission Designation Subcommittee and see if there would be additional information provided at that time that some might influence the potential listing. We did do that in October, as you see, and the recommendation was to continue to list the property. And we returned back in November and had a unanimous vote again, and the property was listed. That second decision was also appealed to city council. So essentially, the first appeal was withdrawn, and it was updated with the second appeal based on the second decision. We had originally thought that we satisfied Ms. Reiling's concerns about the process, but she has recently pointed out that she believes, again, that ordinance is not being followed. In November, I also reported to the Historic Landmarks Commission our staff's opinion that we believe there is sufficient basis to have our urban historian make recommendations on listings, and I'll get into that a little bit more. The HLC considered, again, the significance of the structure at two separate hearings. No information was presented disputing its historic significance. Again, what's a little unusual is this process typically allows for a property owner to actually appeal whether the property should be listed. And there are due process timeframes in our ordinance anticipating that one type of listing, a property owner would have an issue with that listing. Here we have an adjoining property owner that has filed the appeal on the listing. Again, our belief is that the city's review process allows the urban historian to make these recommendations on historic significance. That occurs not only for designations, but on any project that's submitted for alterations that is historically significant. Our urban historian often reviews historic structures reports and makes recommendations on the acceptance of the reports and walks the commission through potential impacts to those resources. Staff positions is that there are, and we do agree that there are, three methods for listing in the ordinance: the use of historic resource surveys, a commissioner identification request, and a historic structures site report that's prepared. And what we also believe is that there is a basis for, in this particular instance, even though it was initiated by the property owner to list the property, we do have a 1978 historic survey form, essentially a previous survey. So we think there is basis to allow us to use previous surveys as a basis for listing. Now, our city urban historian had to make this recommendation based on having to update this record. We did not just take a 40-year-old survey record and bring that forward. She uses that to indicate whether or not there is historic information relative to the property, and then provides the commission with an updated assessment report. And that's included in your council agenda report, the information that was presented to the Historic Landmarks Commission. So at the time, 1978, the building was not identified as landmark-eligible, and therefore it was not listed at the time. At the time, when those early surveys were made, typically those properties that got placed on the potentialist were essentially the cream of the crop, the buildings that we felt needed to be designated. The HLC does not always initiate structure of merit designation, and it prefers owner's consent. So in this case, again, even though the record indicates that the Historic Landmarks Commission requested that the building be designated as structure of merit, we typically go back and speak to the property owner and indicate whether they are supportive of that. And in this case, the property owner was on record that they did not want the structure of merit designation on it. Here's the historic photo of 1925. It's in our records and was presented to the commission along with the current view. And I'm going to last allow Ms. Hernandez to walk you through the significance criteria of this building and what information was given to the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. When I look at a building to be added to the potentials list, the first place I go is to the original survey, because that usually tells me the year it was built, the architects, and it gives me a base for the designation. And then I go through the criteria that is listed in the ordinance of how it would qualify today, based on the integrity. And seeing that this building still looks and conveys the original appearance from 1922 when it was built, I elaborated that it qualified under the criterion D, which is for its architectural style. As you know, that as early as 1917, Santa Barbara was trying to create this visual identity in the Spanish colonial revival style, and this building was designed in 1922 in the Spanish colonial revival style with its smooth stucco walls, its arched door entrances, the clay tile roof, and other character-defining features. So this is one of our authentic pieces that gives our city this Spanish colonial revival identity. So that is criterion D. I also noted that it qualifies under criterion F because it was designed by Sewell, Murphy, and Hastings. This was an architectural firm that did many buildings in our downtown core in the Spanish colonial revival style and helped give Santa Barbara this beautiful identity that we have today that's our Spanish colonial revival motif that makes our city so special. So those were the criteria that I brought to this designation subcommittee as well as to the Historic Landmarks Commission, qualifying it that it would make, qualify as a structure of merit if it were ever designated.
And before I give the staff recommendation, I just want to point, the question before you really is, did the city anticipate whether a property owner would want to have their property listed? And we didn't. And that is not an itemized identification request type. However, in this case, we do have a property owner that wants to take advantage of the state historic building code. In order to do that, they need to be identified either as a designated resource or listed. And this is what motivated the listing. The city did not go out and do the survey. They came to the city, and we agreed with that listing, that there is historic basis to do that listing. So I wanted to point that out. And yes, do we need an update to our historic structures ordinance? Yes, we do. And that is presently being reviewed by our city attorney's office, and we plan to make it more clear and simplify the ordinance to make it follow our current process. That concludes our recommendation, is to deny the appeal, uphold historic landmark decision to place the building on the city's historic potentialist.
Great. And Ms. Murray, if you'd like to come on up, are there any questions for staff at this point? Come on up. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, and Firmina Murray, representing the Historic Landmarks Commission. And I also urge, the commission urge you to deny the appeal and support the staff. This building, Windsor, Sewell, Murphy, and Hastings, these are the same architects who did the U.S. Armory Building, the Veterans Building, and also the Naval Reserve Building, now the Maritime Museum. Pretty important architect. One of the things that we did is, I was a member of the Designation Subcommittee, and this came through in our subcommittee by the urban historian. We acted on it. We want it to be on the potentials list. Usually, you put it on the potentials list, and if there is a project, that usually is a time when the Historic Landmarks would ask the owner, "Now that you're doing this and you're doing that, would you please agree to a designation?" And usually, we work together with the property owner, and so it's a very mutual kind of The Historic Landmarks Commission really wants to work with the neighbor, the property owner, to resolve whatever issues are. But I think the issue is not the landmark. This is definitely, should be on the list. A 1978 survey, usually that automatically puts the building on the California Register of Historic Places, so you can't get around anything like that. And also, it is in the EPV, meaning that whatever happens to it, any exterior alteration, it comes to the HLC for review. So there are all these reviews. So the resource in our mind is protected, and we want to work with the owner. Usually, that's how it works. So we are going to work with the owner and the neighbor and the appeal to try to solve whatever underneath all this. But we urge you to deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have the appellant. Willing, come on up. You have up to 20 minutes, and I have the light up, and there's a clock right there. Anyone who's... There we go. You want to put on the overhead? Yep, of course. If you want to sit down there, there's a microphone right there, too. We just want to make sure you're recorded. You want to flip it around, mirror image. There you go. Great. And then turn it clockwise one more time.
So the appellant is...
I'm sorry. You could first turn on the mic, and if you can state your name, and then if you're going to be there for the time, I'll let you know when you have five minutes left. Okay?
And the light being on, does that...
That's good.
Okay, sounds like I hear myself.
Yep, there you go. You can state your name, please.
So my name is Will Reiling. The appellant, Virginia Reiling, is my mother, and she may walk in the door at any moment. There's a medical situation, so I'm going to do my best to present, based on the written documents that she's submitted. I actually live in San Francisco myself. My mother was born here, lives in a house her parents bought many years ago, and because of family medical situations, I've been spending a lot of time down here. And you've got a great city. I've only lived in large cities myself, and it's refreshing. I've met a few of you because I have an interest in accessibility and actually got a little organization going. And thank you again, Councilor Marillo, for agreeing to be the liaison for the Access Advisor Committee. I know your friends on that committee will be very happy to hear that. So I guess what I'll do first is, there are some documents. There was an issue in this appeal where, like almost every other appeal in recent years, a site visit was scheduled, and then perhaps there was a misunderstanding on the extent to which the appellant... Forgive me for referring to my mother as the appellant, I think. It'll just seem a little strange to be calling her mom. Perhaps it was in part a misunderstanding on why the appellant viewed it as very important in this case to have the site visit, which is typically the day before. And it was actually, you know, from the contacts with staff early on to schedule, it was something that was agreed upon and relied upon and voted upon by the city council on December 15, 2015. And so when the appellant found out last week that it had been canceled without consulting her before or after, she raised an objection shortly after hearing it, but I think it was late in the day on Friday, and requesting, again, yesterday to, in light of that, if the hearing could be continued to allow for a site visit. My reading of the letter is that there is, no one's disputing the city council's discretion whether to choose to have a site visit voted upon, but since in this case, the history was that that was voted upon together with the hearing, that presents that concern, and that's what generated that request to continue the hearing and have a site visit. So I guess I'll pause now. I don't know if a decision was made on that request. Of course, the fact that she's not able to be here at the moment amplifies the problem, but I think...
I'll stop the clock right here, but we did not have a site visit. I would suggest you do what you need to do in terms of making your points for the appeal, and then we can ask questions at that point afterwards if that should come up about the site visit.
Okay.
You're down to 16 minutes and nine seconds, so if you want to get to the merits of the appeal, that would be great.
Okay, so we'll reserve that question, although her view is that not having that site visit has really made it impossible for her to demonstrate what you would need to see on grounds two of her appeal in particular, but grounds one as well. So on the assumption that the council is not going to continue the hearing in that event, which I hope is wrong, that assumption, but on that assumption, I think the only prudent choice would be to rely on grounds one of the appeal and the facts that are, the facts which are uncontested. In other words, not every fact is uncontested, but the facts that are uncontested, together with the plain language of the ordinance, she believes requires reversal of this decision. One sense I have immediately from catching up on the issue is that everybody seems clear on the need to update that 2004 ordinance. You have an absolutely tremendous staff here, both with people that have been here for years, like Mr. Lamone, and then the more recent additions with their own expertise. And I think, you know, their view and looking at the terms of the ordinance, I would probably agree. It's a very restrictive ordinance in terms of the procedure. As you know, there are three classifications of preservation in Santa Barbara. There are actual city landmarks, there are structures of merit, and then this much larger potential list. Structures of merit and landmarks are actually specifically provided to the HLC in the city charter. They have an absolute right to those areas. The potential list has a more questionable history. The city did a master environmental assessment, which is still the current master environmental assessment for historic resources. That was passed in an ordinance, I'm sorry, a resolution in 2002. And then it followed that up. Appendix C to the master environmental assessment was this potential historic list. In the ordinance that resulted, for reasons that only the 2004 city council could explain, they delegated the ability to the HLC to add items to the potential historic list, but in a fairly constricted way. And so in the appeal, grounds one, you know, that history is essentially recounted with the master environmental assessment, which I don't know much about environmental law, but I gather it's an important document to try to keep current, that Appendix C is this potential historic resources list, and that the ordinance 5333, which was codified, delegated to the HLC, the ability to add to it. It had some very, very specific instructions for the HLC to immediately look at it and clean it up, which they did, and to then embark on a program of doing new historic surveys. Prior to this, the historic surveys had been done under state grants in the late '70s. The downtown area, the first phase of the state grants, as Ms. Day's recounts in the introduction to her book, or to the El Pueblo Viejo book, the subcommittee analyzed all of the structures reports and came up with a list of 300 to nominate to the state. So it was really an extensive list, 300 of the buildings, and, you know, this building was not one of them. I think she now admits they missed it somehow, but it was the decision that was made at that time. So it can't really be said that a historic structures report was the reason why this was nominated. Further, the ordinance clearly contemplates that future historic... I'm sorry, I said historic structures report. I meant historic survey, so let me correct that. The ordinance 5333 clearly contemplated that there would be future surveys, and that was what that process was about, certainly not to go back to a survey from 1978, which didn't find the property to be particularly significant in the first place. At any rate, the second... So the ordinance, you know, pretty clearly laid out, I guess the idea, I would assume, makes sense, that if you're going to delegate authority to somebody to put some limits on it, and it has grown tremendously to, I don't know, seven or 800 properties, but that it had to be initiated in certain ways, such as acting to add it within one year of it being identified in a survey. If a single commissioner submits a request in writing, analyzing the reasons and why it should be considered for addition, or if a historic structures report identifies it to be historically significant. And none of those apply here. There was some later discussion with Mr. Lamone about whether the portion of the ordinance that dealt with the demolition, review, and protection could have possibly been relevant, but the answer to that is a demolition was required. I mean, the city administrator had to find that there was a partial or complete demolition to invoke that procedure. And also, each of the mechanisms to add this through the demolition ordinance require historic structures report. require historic structures report. So I think this is a good example of where you have an ordinance that needs to be updated, and staff and its professionalism has, you know, raced ahead and gotten a lot of great work done, which just happens not to comply with the ordinance. And I think the facts are uncontested on that, you know, that I'll just quickly list them, that, you know, that this decision was not initiated by a historic structures report, it was not initiated by a survey, certainly not a new survey, and it was not initiated by, a request by a commissioner. And so the, so the, so the legal grounds, which is, I think, the, with my, with the appellant's absence, I think is the one thing that can be relied upon here, is does the city have a requirement to continue to follow the terms of that ordinance? If there were some ambiguities in the ordinance, the city could interpret the ordinance, and there would be deference to the city, not unlimited deference, but deference to the city on resolving ambiguous terms, but it, there doesn't appear to be any ambiguity. And, and so unlike, I think, a typical appeal where you're asked to re-judge a question that some lower board adjudged, and you step into their shoes and use your own judgment and decide, this, I think, seems clear that this, this, this body is as bound by the terms of the ordinance as, as the landmarks commission was, that it doesn't have the ability to waive a term in the ordinance. I think things should get cracking on any revisions that are needed, but there were reasons why the 2004 council passed this ordinance. And, and I just, I want to respond lastly to some comments in the agenda report. I think it's important for you to stick to the terms of the appeal as written. I think it's unfortunate. I know that the appellant, Mrs. Relling, really does appreciate the staff and really does appreciate what the HLC does and has supported them tremendously over the years. You know, thank you, Commissioner Murray, for being here today. And, and one thing, I think, that ever, another thing that my Virginia, Relling, seems to agree with most commissioners is that these historic structures reports can be really, really useful documents going forward. Once you have a historic structures report by one of your certified historians, that provides a roadmap going forward for protecting a building, because it identifies what's historic and what's not.
You're at five minutes left, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. It identifies what's allowed, what is historic and what's not historic going forward. And, you know, I will allude to grounds two and only to say that, you know, that, that the lack of a historic structures report really did create this problem, you know, where you, you know, the, if an owner of a building wants to, under the current terms of the ordinance, get added to the list, they have three very viable options. They can commission a historic structures report, they can approach a commissioner and convince the commissioner that it needs to be added to the list, and the commissioner can proceed accordingly, or it can push for one of these surveys to be done, and then it can proceed further that way. I will just represent that there are a mountain of documents showing the process where, you know, the whole effort was driven by an application for a building permit that was rejected by the fire marshal on the basis that he feels is unsafe, and there is a, you know, a record of correspondence back and forth between the applicants and the fire marshal, where to date, to his great credit, the fire marshal has stuck to his guns, and that he believes what they're asking for is unsafe, but it is the historic building code that allows what they're asking to do, which is essentially intensify and expand the use of the building from the traditional stores to another food and beverage service establishment without, without following the city's requirements for sprinkler, fire sprinklers, and a second fire exit. The house, the appellant's house is 110 years old, wooden, 12 feet from their, from this property. So that is kind of the personal financial interest to be disclosed, that there is an actual financial loss from this decision to her. There is also a 140-year-old structure of merit that's wood on the, that's also adjacent to this structure. So, you know, if the fire marshal is able to, you know, sort of withstand this assault and, and, and stick to what, you know, he thinks is safe, I suppose that's a non-issue. So in closing, I want to just point out a couple of options. It seems that, like, the terms of the ordinance are mandatory, so it's, it's, I think, under those terms, if you accept that the council has the obligation to follow an ordinance and doesn't have the ability to just, you know, waive it, that the appeal has to be upheld. But I think that there are a couple of areas of instruction that you can give to the HLC whether or not you uphold the appeal. And in other words, you can uphold the appeal and request that the HLC follow through on its vote to actually proceed with the structure of merit designation. You can either uphold or deny the appeal with instructions to the HLC to get a structure, you know, request the structures report for the applicant, which I think would just eliminate the endless questions about, you know, what's historic, what's not, and what's safe and what's not. I'd like to, you know, there's some great pictures that you've seen, and I think one of those pictures actually came from the appellant. These, this building was built by, it was built by F.P. Knott, as Mr. Hawthorne has previously pointed out. F.P. Knott was one of the early color photographers. The news press, News Record article at the time said that, referred to them as the F.P. Knott Stores. There's a cover story in Architect and Engineer Magazine referring to them as the-
You're out of time, thank you very-
Okay. And I just, the 100th anniversary, F.P. Knott was instrumental in the creation of the National Park System. He, he did three-quarters of the color photographs in this edition of National Graphic, which is known to have had an instrumental effect in getting the National Park System created. So April 2016 is a really big anniversary coming up, so-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're up to the applicant. If there's, you know, we have a representative from the applicant, although it's an HLC appeal of their own doing, right? So we had the staff report. Okay. So unless, are you, you're here to speak on public comment, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. So since this was an appeal based on a city HLC-designated thing, we don't, we wouldn't have necessarily an applicant presentation, so we'll go to public comment if you want to come up at this point. Olivia Marr, come on up. You don't get 20 minutes, so you only get two.
Okay, I'll try to make it quick. Mayor Schneider and council members, I'm Olivia Marr. I'm an attorney with Binak Bawer Archibald &amp; Spray, and we're attorneys for Dario Fellati and Codario Restaurant. As the anchor tenant of the building, Codario is in full support of the Historic Landmark Commission's decision to place the building on the city's potential list and requests that the council deny Ms. Relling's approval, appeal. There's been some question as to the intent or the reasons for why the city, or the applicant applied or inquired about getting the building on the city's potentials list, and I will say that that came from my client's desire to do some tenant improvements, and the architect having some conversations with the building and finding out that there were going to be certain requirements, including potentials, punctures into the building, and new ingress and egress that would be required under the current building code. The architect felt that that was strange for a building like this, was concerned about whether the building was ever designated historic, thought it was interesting, and had further discussion, and found out that the building had not ever been designated historic, and so pursued it further. That's how it became an applicant-requested historic process. However, the Historic Landmark Commission has clearly discussed and, over and over, about whether this building is historic, and clearly it is. So we're here now, after that process, and the appellant has admitted that the appeal really has nothing to do with the historic nature of the building. It's really just sort of a technical, technicality that this is why we're here. They're asking for the unanimous decision to be dismissed, and this is the second appeal on their, in the process. The first appeal resulted in them going back and changing the process, and yet, after getting the process changed, them going back one more time, we're here again with the second appeal. It's a pattern, a pattern that Mrs., Mr. Fellati has witnessed, not just in the HLC process, but with other applications. Any change that he makes to his business is met with opposition from Ms. Relling. This is not the first time he's interacted with her.
Thank you.
It feels like abuse, it feels like harassment.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure, Ms. Murillo, if you'd like to come back up, we have a question. Ms. Moss, Ms. Marr, there's a question. Ms. Murillo?
So you represent Codario Restaurant, not the owner of the building, which is Radius Commercial?
Correct. Mike Chenoweth is the owner of the building, and we represent Dario Fellati. He is the anchor tenant, so he occupies, I would say, what, 75% of the space of the building.
If you need to speak, you need to speak up at the podium.
Radius isn't the owner of the building.
Thank you.
It's Mike Chenoweth.
No, it's actually my family.
Oh, sorry.
And who are you? If you could announce yourself, please, for the record.
Michael Chenoweth, I represent the family ownership of the building.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. So you all are okay with it being put on the potential list, but you don't want it to be a structure of merit? Is that what I understood?
Correct. At this time, that's what we're wishing to do.
The city gets overview of the property on the potentials list as it is, and to be honest, there's no desire, at least on the tenants' part, to be a part of another public process that has to go through so many appeals. It's, it's a long history of this and a long delay tactic, in our opinion.
And is it true that there's plans to expand a restaurant function, and if you have this designation, you won't have to add sprinklers or something like that?
That's, that's not true.
That was misunderstood. We are appealing for the fire sprinklers based on the building's structure, but doesn't-
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor-
Go ahead, yes.
We are making a fully crappy record here. Can we get one speaker at the mic at a time?
Sure. I think, yes, I think you can speak to the issue. Thank you, I was just about to-
So we're here today to talk about whether the building is historic or not. If the building is historic and on the potentials list, it does have the ability through, there's a different code that governs the historic building, right? Currently, there's applications in. One of the requests being made by the applicant is that fire sprinklers be, not be required because they puncture the building in certain places and they would change the historic merit. That is going to be heard by the city in appeals board meeting. The city, based on the code and the ability for the building to be under the historic code, will decide that on its merits. It's not at issue here.
Thank you. Mr. Lamon, can I ask you to give us an update on this fire-
You very much.
-issue?
Yes, Councilwoman Murillo, my understanding is there was a appeal hearing today, but because of the conflict today with the council appeal, it was requested to be continued to a future date. And they are correct. What initiated this listing was the fact that there is a provision in the state historic building code that allows for alternative means of code compliance to lessen the strict interpretation of current code regulations. And when they proposed to expand the restaurant, it triggered local fire sprinkler requirements, and that's what they're trying to get relief from primarily.
Say that last sentence again.
They're, they're trying to get relief from that local code requirement to mandate complete fire sprinklers in the building.
So once it's listed on the potential list-
Yes.
-if that happens-
Right.
How long does something, does something stay on the list and never get to be a structure of merit, or is that inevitable?
Possibly. I mean, there have been, as was relayed earlier, these surveys began in the late 70s. We still have properties on that list that have not been designated. Since that time, we've also added more properties. So the idea is when we list a property, we want to identify that it is landmark or structure merit eligible. And whether or not it moves forward has to do with our priorities in the, the ones that move forward that we think have greater importance in the city. And so we are in a program to focus on landmark designations per year, but structure merit designations typically come forward on the request of property owners, to be honest with you.
Okay, but to be, to make, to make it clear, please-
Yes.
So if they get on the list, they do get relief from a fire requirement?
No, no, that's not. That's what's in dispute. What they do get is the, they do get to qualify for the request to get relief, and it's still up to the fire marshal and the building official to approve that alternative use of code provision. So it's still being disputed whether or not they're going to get any relief.
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question of the appellant now? Are we still asking questions?
No, we, I'm closing public comment. It's to the council, so it's to the council. Thank you.
Okay. Your, one of your mother's letters, this one's dated, well, November 16th, and it closes with, on page four, that the resource needs protection from its owner, and it talks about past acts on the part of the property owner, apparently, which violated the law and prospectively to allow public safety to be endangered. Can you expand on that, please?
Yes. The, there have been extensive, extensive exterior alterations and interior made to the building, which the city is handling as enforcement cases. So as a member of the public, we're not really able to tell what the status is of the enforcement and even what's included and what's not included. The, can you repeat the phrase that you read from, please? I'm sorry.
It was her appeal letter of November 16.
The letter itself, okay.
Mm-hmm. Page four, under grounds number two.
So I think it, you know, it's, it's a, there's a, I prefer to rely on the strict code interpretation question, because everything else about this seems to be a little upside down. You know, the applicant wants to be a little historic, but not too much. The appellant is opposing the, being a little historic, but feels that the structure of merit designation would actually protect the building, and therefore, her home.
Which is, which is next door.
Correct, correct. The, I infer that the reason is that a structure of merit would never have gotten away with the extent of unpermitted work that's been done. Now, in fairness, the HLC is definitely working on that. They've been working on it since last March. There's a, there's an HLC meeting tomorrow. But in the absence of a structures report, you have things being proposed that are completed already, and they're saying, well, those don't affect the structure, those don't affect the beauty of the building, even though they really do conflict with the-
Okay.
But, and, but meanwhile, the work that they want to do, they're saying, well, those areas aren't historic. So, so a structures report, I mean, the reason that would be wonderful guidance to get from the council is that would put this to rest, I think, that, you know, on, on an ongoing basis.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Lamone, are you confirming that statement is correct, that some exterior and interior changes have been made to the building and they're in violation right now?
Madam, Councilmember Maria, we do have a current enforcement case that involves primarily exterior alterations where we do have evidence that some alterations have occurred over the years without approvals. That scope of work is coming before the Historic Landmark Commission, like, it is tomorrow. It is scheduled for tomorrow's commission here. Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to have to absorb all of this because, I mean, I'm hearing all of this information orbiting and it is a structure that deserves some protection. So I'd like to hear the rest of the discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Hart?
So we have a process to put properties on the potential historic resource list and the appellant is arguing that we didn't follow the right process. Mr. Klon, what would you say in response to that?
Well, first, this is an unusual appeal because the city council is being asked to come to a legal conclusion about its own ordinance. The, let me start with the obvious. Mr. Lamone has been quite candid that the staff have had to interpret the process to fit an unusual situation. That's another way of saying that I agree with Mr. Rayling that we don't have strict compliance with the words of the ordinance. What I think we have, though, and the question for the council, is whether the process the staff have outlined substantially complies with the terms of the ordinance. I think there is room for the council to make that kind of determination. On the other hand, you do have the authority to demand strict compliance and that would call for following one of the three steps identified in the staff slides, or one of the three methods identified in the staff slides for listing a potential resource.
So the HLC delegation subcommittee, HLC, help me with that phrase.
Designation Subcommittee.
Designation Subcommittee did review this, did determine that the structure appropriately should be placed on the potential historic resource list. And that is comprised of members of the HLC and that is a path that can also have this process be met, is having a commissioner move this issue forward and bring it to our attention. So the interpretation that we might need to make is that having the Designation Subcommittee make that, have that action to recognize this could be interpreted as a commissioner...
Councilmember Hart, if I can just comment. If we wanted to follow one of those three methods, we could have requested a commissioner to bring it forward. I mean, it could still happen. So directing that to happen is going to result where we are now.
Right.
Secondly, if we directed the applicant to prepare a historic structures report, it places undue delay on their part on something that we feel is obvious and not in dispute, the historic significance of the structure. So yes, it could give us more information on the permitting of the building and some history, dig deeper into the, what was there at a certain time and place. But that wasn't, we feel, important to put that additional cost on this applicant to prepare a report. So to be honest with you, it does delay the process if, in fact, we have to go through and refer all individual listings to the Designation Subcommittee. They mean on a correlated basis, we list properties more often. And so if we have a need to list a property, we rely on the recommendation of our urban historian. I even asked this question, the Historic Landmark Commission, are you comfortable coming with individual properties to list them in this manner? And they emphatically agreed that, yes, if they had a problem, they'd refer it back to the Designation Subcommittee if there was some question about significance.
Well, it seems like a completely appropriate process to have that committee make a recommendation, the HLC approve it, and we're ultimately the arbiters of that decision. This is items on appeal. We're using our independent judgment to recognize that this is appropriately, this is a historic resource, this is appropriately on the potential historic resource list. So ultimately, it seems like our action today would be, is the same outcome as a different process to get to the same appeal. Just seems, from a common sense standpoint, that we ought to be able to act to resolve this today and that the information isn't even in dispute as to whether this is a historic resource. It's just a matter of how we got here.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for the appellant, Mr. Rayling.
Yes.
There's a section in your letter, or your mother's letter, I suppose, about standing. Because I'm really, I'm still scratching my head over the interest and the reason why we're here today. We've been talking about technicalities, we've been talking about process, and there's a statement, "I appeal as an interested adjacent property owner who has lost and will lose property and quality of life as a result of the addition, decision appealed from." And I am struggling to really figure out what it is that you're talking about in that, what the loss is. There's a technical piece of the code you're going after, right or wrong, but oftentimes when we get neighbor-on-neighbor appeals, it has something else in mind. What is there, something else that we don't know about here? Because is it actually the historic merit of the structure that you're talking about? Is it the potential change of use of the property itself you're talking about? Or is there something else going on? Because I'm having trouble with the, with the standing part or else, your perspective on this.
Well, my understanding of it is on the first part of what you asked, what would be, what is the lost property? And I, from reading other documents, I believe that may be, since that's something that's not even needed for a city council appeal, citizens have standing, so I'm assuming that that's in there to contemplate any further challenge if the city does not comply with its own ordinance. The lost property that suffered as a result of this decision is what happens to the value of a house with something dangerous next to it, something that the fire marshal is on the record saying, this is dangerous. This is the application. The dispute between the applicant and the fire marshal, the appeals board, appeal that was just referred to, that was just filed with correspondence from the architect demanding to be able to create a establishment with room for 100 and one way out and no sprinklers. And I, for whatever reason, I believe the fire marshal is, has some expertise and he believes that it would be dangerous. This historic code, there are members of the state historic safety board that believe that Santa Barbara's, all of Santa Barbara's local fire amendments are void on a building that's on one of these lists. I know that hasn't been tested and I don't know if that's the majority view, but I can see the section in the code that they're referring to. So on this particular property, that is the nexus between this decision and a loss in property value. What was in this location for 25 years was American Dry Cleaners, a drop store, nine-to-five. For those of you, you know, the history, this was Danish toy town, you know, a series of small offices and buildings for years. And due to the tremendous success of Mr. Filati, the tenant, although I know he's not a party to this proceeding, you know, that has changed things. And Santa Barbara doesn't apparently have any, you know, there are no special requirements to turn a two-person office into a restaurant with, you know, 50 people in it. But that does affect the property value of the adjacent neighbor. So it just seems, I would assume, appropriate to disclose that, that there is a personal interest in addition to the public interest. And I think public safety is referenced. I think that could, that would fairly be a public safety issue as well. And let me know if I'm out of order in asking this question, but...
Yeah, you're out of order of asking a question. You can answer our questions at this point.
I've still got a question. So in short, what you're saying is your standing is based on your concern of the use of the property, not, it's not in the actual merit of the, whether or not it's a historic building or whether the process was followed?
Well, I would just, you know, read from the statement that, it says, "I appeal as an interested citizen of Santa Barbara who desires to promote historic preservation without sacrificing respect for the law. I also appeal as an interested adjacent property owner who has lost and will lose property and quality of life as a result of the decision appealed from. I own the adjacent property that shares a 100-foot property line." So, now, I don't know if I had an opportunity to say this, but...
You can answer questions from us at this point. You had 20 minutes to give your presentation.
But I have a due process, I mean, question, I mean, you disclosed your ex parte contacts.
Yeah, it's to the council now, so you're welcome to answer questions from us. And we did disclose all ex parte contacts at the beginning of the hearing.
But there was no opportunity to ask any further questions about them? I mean...
That, no, the whole point is to disclose ex parte communications and that happened at the beginning of the appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Rayling.
So requesting any significance...
I'm sorry, you're not questioning, it's to the council at this point.
Okay, all right. So I just, seems like a flaw in the process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I apologize for interrupting Councilmember Hotchkiss and Madam Mayor. Mr. Rayling raises a significant issue that I want to explain now on the record. And that is, the council has been advised to disclose ex parte contacts and further to disclose the content of those communications when you've been influenced by the receipt of substantial information. The fact that the council did not make further disclosures than to identify that ex parte contacts took place is evidence that there were no substantive communications to disclose for Mr. Rayling.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I feel like I'm at law school here. Is the enforcement issue that you spoke of, does that have any bearing on this matter at all?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, we've been instructed by the city attorney that there has to be a nexus between the actual action before the commission and any enforcement-related actions. That's why we separated the two issues. Maybe the city attorney has a different take on it, but we believe that what's being appealed is just the listing. It has nothing to do with the alteration that are being pursued. I don't know, again, the city attorney's...
City attorney, are you in agreement with that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'm frankly not sure I understand the question.
Well, I just wondered if this enforcement that's going to take part of the issue, discussion that's taking place tomorrow, has any real bearing on this? It doesn't sound to me like it does.
I don't believe it does.
All right. Well, to use an NFL image here, I feel like Mr. Rayling has thrown the red flag. We're up in the booth and we have to see overwhelming evidence that what was decided by, not once or twice, by our various commissions is improper. And I don't see any overwhelming evidence at all. You presented your mother's view well, if somewhat long, and, but I would honestly, on the basis of that comparison, which you may take exception with, choose to deny the appeal.
Mr. Dominguez?
The danger of having a former lawyer up here next to you, Dominguez, so overwhelming evidence, I'm not sure if that's the legal standard here or not, or if it's just simple majority of the evidence. My concerns, and I think there's pros and cons of going with the staff report, but my overwhelming concern is when government makes a mistake or when the law is not clear and it's the resident having to fight the government, I instantly become very nervous and very hesitant. And the fact that the resident had already paid two appeals fees and the city had a chance to rectify the mistake and Mr. Lamone's been very candid and honest about other avenues the city could have taken that would also have prevented the business from hiring an attorney, no offense to the attorney, but could have saved that party as well much time and money. I think it's really up to the city to do it right the first time as much as possible and I know we do 99.99% of the time. But here where there's three bases for, and they're listed specifically in the code, the use of a historic resource survey, the request of an HLC commissioner, which it seems like that's the one we're trying to hang the hook on. Is that correct? That's the closest one of the three?
Councilmember Dominguez, we actually have pointed out that the use of a survey record is, was the basis, primary basis, because we had an old '78 survey and it was updated as a result of our historian taking a closer look at the property. So most people read our administrative regulations and interpret a survey to be a group of properties, when in reality, we can survey one property. And again, one would think that our urban historian has the capability to prepare a mini-assessment like what she did for the commission and that serves as a historic structures report. So again, we're going to argue that we meet the intent that enough information was provided to the commission to take action.
And maybe you can expand on that a little bit because it says, "The use of a historic resource survey." So it sounds to me like the city would go around and survey things and then say, let's add these to a list, as opposed to the business owner comes to you and says, hey, I want to do this, and then you go find the appropriate survey and make it happen, because that doesn't seem...
Right.
...what the intent of this code is.
We could have expanded the list to include other options, yes. I've been very clear that if we, if, I also mentioned to the commission that we also use the demo review ordinance provision in another section where we end up resulting in the same process where we do list properties as a result of a recommendation from our historian. So, you know, we could be more clear in our ordinance and in the future, I expect us to take care of that.
And to make it clear, I definitely believe this, the historical element of this building has been proven. It is, and people have thrown around the term technicality and as a former law school teacher, we would tell our students, hey, if your party is the one that violated the law, call it a technicality. If it's the other side, call it a legal requirement. So I hate to use a term that can be interpreted so differently by various sides, but if the legal requirement is there, I'm hard pressed to avoid it. And I think you indicated that one other method would have been to direct a commissioner to take a stance, but the problem is, we didn't have a commissioner take the stance. And since we don't have the commission here for a particular individual to say, I would have taken that stance, this is, this can be viewed as an end run around the situation. And I see an analogy in criminal law where you have hearsay and sometimes law enforcement brings an officer who repeats what they heard on the street instead of bringing in the person and you ask, well, it's the same thing, we maybe didn't need to hear from that person, but maybe that person, when they've shown up and said what you think they're going to say.
Madam Mayor?
Not to argue with Councilmember Dominguez, we haven't even met yet. But the hypothetical that he just described, I see the facts before the council slightly differently in that, as opposed to in hearsay where you have one form of evidence versus primary evidence, before the council today, you have the material of a historic survey. The report that Ms. Hernandez prepared and presented to the HLC Listing Subcommittee and the HLC Committee on their determination was based on a survey. Yes, it was done in 1978. Did the 2004 rewrite of this ordinance anticipate the pulling up of a 1978 survey? It did not in the sense that it was looking prospectively from 2004 on. However, and the writing of the 2000 rewrite of this ordinance was protective of property owner's interests. And that's where you see the one-year timeframe. That one-year timeframe can be waived by a property owner if that delay is caused by the property owner. In this particular case, the property owner said, hey, I want this, I want this, the city to rely on the 1978 survey, present it to the HLC and have them make a determination on whether or not this property qualifies. it to the HLC, and have them make a determination on whether or not this property qualifies." To speak to Councilmember Hart's comment earlier, if we followed the appellant's advice about the options before the council, directed the preparation of a new survey, and had a new survey presented to the HLCs for their decision, I would submit that the evidence before the HLC would not change. The property was built when it was built. It was designed by who it was designed by. It was constructed by who it was constructed by. The appellant is not arguing about any of those facts before the council today. And so when Mr. Klon talks about substantial compliance with the ordinance, the reason why this council agenda report was written and presented to you is because I believe that this had substantial compliance with the ordinance, given its writing, given the methodology presented for the methods for designating a potential historic resource, and it complied with the protections. It was not violating those protections afforded to property owners within the rewrite.
Is there a point of order on a correction?
I'm sorry, you're, you're going to have to step away from the microphone unless we ask you a question, but Mr. Klon wanted to bring up something.
I want to clarify roles here, because what you've heard from Mr. Vincent is an argument on behalf of the staff. I'm here to advise the council in your neutral capacity as decision-maker. Now, I happen to agree, and I've already advised, that this is a question of substantial compliance. The question before you is whether the evidence, as Mr. Vincent has laid it out and Mr. Lamone has described, that is, the equivalent process of creating a survey that the staff followed, whether that equivalent process is sufficient.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, were you, were you done?
I just wanted to clarify, my hearsay argument was about the second prong, the request of an HLC commissioner. And we don't even have hearsay, right? Because you're not arguing that there is a particular commissioner who made the request?
As far as I know, there's no HLC member who's made that request.
That's correct, Mr. Dominguez. We did not see...
You're conceding that you don't have prong two?
We initiated it. In retrospect, I think we could in the future ask a commissioner to bring it forward, as we, you know, that we have a request from a member of the public, and we'd ask a commissioner to bring it forward. That could solve the problem in the future.
And are you conceding the third one, the use of a historic site report?
Well, essentially, that's what our historian does when she looks at a property and determines whether there is a basis for criteria being met. And that's what she presented to the commission.
And what was the HLC review?
The HLC confirmed that they agreed with the criteria being met, and therefore they actually moved to list the properties on two separate occasions.
So you're using a post-report review, because it seems like what this code is saying, if you do a review, and then they come in with a report after the fact. But you're saying you can do the report and then review the report, and then you'd have both checkboxes ticked?
Mr. Dominguez, Councilmember Dominguez, I think in retrospect, we thought that the ordinance would allow for a property owner to present their own structures report, to bring evidence to the commission to either contradict our determination or to support the listing. So we always thought that would be initiated by applicant. In this case, we don't even have a project. So we thought it was unfair to bring forward a structures report, put that additional cost on them, when we could do the equivalent and present that criteria to the commission.
So then, and just to kind of wrap this up, what I'm worried about then with the substantial compliance is that we're saying we did like a third of each of the three, and then we should add that up to a third, which sets a precedence that I'm not willing to extend, that we kind of had a report, we kind of had sympathetic commissioners because they did vote ultimately for this. And we had a survey, it was done, you know, several years before the city ordinance or before the current action is taking place. So I'm just worried that we have a lot of stuff here, which is true, but it doesn't really fit any of the three things that the code requires us to do 100%. So I'll leave it at that.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having, I'm harkening back to a day when I believe there were dozens, if not, I'm going to say 100, properties surveyed by volunteers en masse. I'm going to talk about the West Beach area was one, and then up in kind of in the Prospect Avenue, or those are a couple of areas that come to mind, where it was really a wholesale review of properties on a less formal basis, shall we say. It was not, we didn't hire people. It was really done on the cheap. And, but I would wager that there are dozens or 100 properties out of that inventory that are now eligible for historic merit and have the various qualifications of the three categories. So that's what, for me, that background is what, for me, when I read the material and heard the report today, that it does qualify as being a survey. So, and I appreciate the appellant's concerns about compatibility and safety such and such. And so I need to tease that apart and go, "That's a separate issue. I'm hearing that there's our enforcement issues." So, but those are being attended to on a separate track. On this issue, I feel as if it's, we, I have the material to move forward with supporting the eligibility.
Just to be clear, the issue related to the fire marshal, if we were to deny this appeal and this property becomes a potential structure, the fire marshal, if he decides or she decides, whoever, that this is still unsafe and you need to abide by code, has the ability to do so? Can we be absolutely clear about, and when is that determination? So as I'm understanding it, the whole point of going to this process is by making this designation, it allows the property owner to even have the question asked, right? But that doesn't, but then the fire marshal still has complete authority to determine the public safety of whether or not to waive a current local code or not. And I guess that's to Mr. Klon or whomever needs to answer that.
I think, Madam Mayor, you're basically correct. I think the fire marshal's already exercised their judgment and questions on appeal.
Okay. All right. So just wanted to make that clear. Mr. Hart?
Well, if there are any more comments, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Actually, Ms. Mario, I think you had a question. Did you want to make comments at this point?
I think my comments were echoing what Councilmember White had said, that we have these other issues, the fire issue, the enforcement action, clarifying of the ordinance. I think I heard that in this very interesting discussion this afternoon. And I just wanted to tell Mr. Rayland that he made a valiant effort, but that I would be denying the appeal. Obviously, the structure deserves a status, the structure deserves protection. I don't like some of these other things that have gone on, but there's a process to address those. And we have teased them out. So, thank you.
Mr. Hart?
I'll make a motion to, that the council deny the appeal and uphold the Historic Landmarks Commission's decision to place the building at 2937 East Victoria Street on the city's potential historic resources list.
I'll second.
Okay, so moved by Hart, second by Hotchkiss. I'll just add, I appreciate where Mr. Dominguez was going about, you know, being right to the letter of the law. I also, with other comments made by my colleagues, try to look at the greater public good and what would happen if we upheld the appeal and what that would mean in terms of bureaucracy and in the, when it, when other major issues like the public safety and enforcement things are already being taken care of separately. If that were kind of washed away with this action, that'd be something different. But it seems, and I think, Mr. Hart, you said yourself, if we were to uphold the appeal, we ask a commissioner to bring something forward to an HLC, it comes back, we get back to exactly where we are. And that's a lot of, that's a lot of time and energy that is really not necessary, knowing that the ordinance does need updating. And thank you, Mr. White, for reminding me about that whole, you know, looking at that survey of all those other reports. So I'll just add that. Mr. Dominguez, did you have anything else?
How long would that...
Turn on your mic.
How long would it take if we upheld the appeal and it had to go through the process, and we had a commissioner make the request?
Mr. Lamone?
We could get that on possibly within 30 days.
Okay.
Would that be another appealable decision?
Yes, it would.
And I realize that's possibly a solution that neither party would be happy with, because it kind of splits the baby. But in my mind, it's two principles of getting the law exactly right versus doing something in a timely fashion that we realize might be inevitable.
Is it okay to go on the record?
No, it's not okay for you to speak anymore. Thank you very much.
And another point that I would make too, is that, you know, the intent of this ordinance is important as well, which is to try and encourage historic structures protection and to make this easier on people to do that, to not necessarily create a burdensome process. This is the lowest tier of designation. There are subsequent tiers that require additional documentation, additional action. This is the entry point to protecting a structure. And so I think what staff has done in the spirit of substantial conformance with the intent of that ordinance is to open that door to make it possible to protect properties. As Councilmember White described, you know, we had a volunteer process doing surveys. There were obviously properties that were missed in that process. Times have changed since those surveys were done, properties that were not historic resources or deemed to be so at the time because of the context and the availability of other structures like them that were more historic. Time has passed, buildings have been lost, the historic resource palette has shifted and changed. This was identified by staff as being something important. It's a very simple building. It could easily have been missed in that survey process. This is another way to get the protection necessary for this property, the property that has been documented by staff and historians. And this makes sense in that respect, I think.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions to the motion? All right. It may be a split vote. Why don't we do a roll call? We can do a roll call? Councilmember Dominguez? The motion is to deny the appeal. If you want to deny it, say aye. If you want to uphold it, say nay, or no. I'm sorry, what was it about?
Nay.
Nay, okay. Hart?
Aye.
Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Rouse?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder? Aye. So that passes 6-1. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. We have a couple of other items. First, any council member committee assignment reports. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I report that the, after almost two years of work, that Crescent Crossing has been moved to, I don't know if it's temporary or permanent location at Amtrak Station. There's some disagreement about where it should actually end up, but this is sort of a testament to Ginny Brush's long work in getting everybody to come together and agree. So congratulations to her, and I think that'll be an improvement to the city.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The regular meeting, the downtown parking meeting, took place at the Railroad Depot and adjacent properties around the Funk Zone to discuss the eventual development, use, and circulation going on down there with all the development of Funk Zone. So they're going to be studying that and hopefully trying to put the genie back in the bottle as we move forward and complete that construction down there.
Mr. Hart?
I attended the Beacon Beach Erosion Authority for Clean Ocean Nourishment meeting, where we had a presentation about sea level rise that was actually very interesting and probably would be something perhaps for a future council presentation. They have very sophisticated maps that show the level of potential sea level rise in the city, harkening back to a former effort. But this is, you know, significantly more advanced with scientific underpinnings to it that are very powerful. And I think it's important for the public to hear more about that at a future date. I also attended the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation's annual meeting, where David Bolton was given the Volunteer of the Year Award, very well-deserving. He has worked very hard tirelessly for the trust. And David and Katie Hay received an award for the restoration of the Hosmer Adobe, which literally was an eight-year process in doing. So it was quite a great event.
On the sea level rise, the SpaceX rocket that went up from Vandenberg a couple weeks ago is specifically to do research on sea level rise, using a polar orbit. So really exciting stuff. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. Last week, transportation planning staff held a community workshop about the Las Pecitas pathway, and it was well-attended. And I went and got to hear what people had to say. A couple of ceremonial items, ribbon cutting of nectar, and the Museum of Natural History, some others of us were there. That was great. And the youth council met yesterday. They're putting on an event to prevent cyberbullying, again, part of, inspired by your efforts, Madam Mayor, in, to prevent bullying. And they're also wanting to take a look at our climate change action plan, the youth council. So they're on fire.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the, in your place, the SB CAG meeting of last week and the, on the US 101 corridor update. I think the big piece of news there is that the funding for the overpasses in Carpinteria were approved by the California Transportation Commission. I think that was the big piece of news out of that. At the Air Pollution Control District, this was the last meeting of Mr. Van Mullum as the air pollution control officer and who will be replaced by Erin Janey, a, now a staff member of the San Luis Air Pollution Control District. And she'll be taking over that position. And then I, yesterday, I attended the COME monthly meeting, and the, the good news about the lack of rain this month is that the COME was able to get another several hundred mitigation oak trees into the ground as part of the compensating for all the trees that were damaged by raising the dam to protect the steelhead. So that's, that's the one piece, that's the piece of good news out of the drought.
Great. Thank you for attending those meetings last week. I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors' Winter Meeting in Washington, DC, and always a fantastic group of sessions. The first lady spoke at a plenary session about veteran homelessness and the challenge to end veteran homelessness. I gave my, a part of the Task Force on Hunger and Homelessness, so there was the presentation there. And on Friday, I think we put out the announcement yesterday, but the city of Santa Barbara received the Small City Leadership in the Arts Award from the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the Americans for the Arts National Organization. So it's the first California city, I think, ever to get this award, is what we could see from when they started putting these awards together from the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So yay for us. And the actual award is being shipped. It was gorgeous, and I didn't want to try to bring it home after I got into the last flight out almost from National Airport from Snowmageddon. So it's good to be home. So that was, that was, that was great. It was great to be there. And we have a couple of closed sessions. Conference with... Oh, I'm sorry, your light wasn't on. Mr. Dominguez, go ahead.
I attended, with Paul Casey, the League of Cities, California Cities. They did some special training, and they had ethics training, and they brought us up to speed on several legislative updates. And it was a great time. And last week, Kathy and I were both at the Neighborhood Advisory Council meeting, and it was great to see active participants there, and they were discussing grants.
Great. Good. Okay, now we have two closed sessions.
Conference with Labor Negotiator, and item 19, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, the subject being Santa Barbara High School.
Okay, and we will adjourn from closed session. Thank you.